The Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with agendas presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wartman and Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-on sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, tablets, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed on silent mode or turned off. The roll call, Ms. Sarnicki, please.
Mr. Apidian?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krenn?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Coram present. Item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Mr. Faison, a second. Mr. Tagle, vote. Ms. Sarnicki.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Ms. Kuppa?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes. Third item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the May 9, 2017 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Ms. Kuppa, a second. Mr. Edmonds, roll call, Ms. Sarnicki, please.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Ms. Kuppa?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes. Item number four on the agenda, public comment for items not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to an agenda, to an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five on the agenda. ZBA report. Ms. Kuppa?
Last week's ZBA meeting, we had one variance that we granted for a property that had a setback. They were doing an expansion that, or an additional thing to their house, an addition to their house, that required a setback that was outside the limits, so we granted them that. There was another variance that was due to a property that was going to be split. There was some divided comments from the community, the builder's going to go back. We postponed that, voting on that. He's going to go back and see what he can do. And then, we had a very, very informative presentation by our city attorney, Lori Gregbloom, and Mr. Motzni on proper issuing of variances and under what conditions. And it was very informative, and I hope that they will come here and do something similar for us. I just found it very informative, what they went through.
Okay, thank you. Item number six on the agenda, Downtown Development Authority, DDA report. Mr. Savanat?
There was a DDA meeting last Wednesday morning. The Downtown Development Authority discussed and recommended approval of the Quality Development Initiative Program, which is QDI program, which is an incentive the DDA is encouraging that, for new development within the Downtown Development Authority. It encourages higher-quality projects that include parking decks. So, you'll be hearing more of that as it goes before city council.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, anything else?
Yeah, just to clarify, what's spearheading this QDI program is the proposed development at A88 Big Beaver with that large parking deck. There, essentially, a QDI allows a property owner, if approved by the DDA and by city council, to receive a percentage of the total tax capture back, rather than all the additional capture going to the DDA. A portion of it, up to 60%, will go back to the property owner as a return on their investment.
Item number seven, planning and zoning report.
I believe the Planning Commission today received an email from the city manager's office requesting you to respond to potential dates and times for a joint meeting, so please, when you have a chance, respond to that. And we're getting busy. We're getting busy. We've got busy agendas ahead of us for the next few months.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight on the agenda for tonight is a conditional rezoning. A public hearing, conditional rezoning, file number CRJPCR2017-001. Proposed Livenoy, Haldane Townhomes, west side of Livenoy, south of Square Lake, section 09, from RT1 family attached residential district to NNQ neighborhood node Q district. Mr. Carlet.
Thank you, and good evening, Planning Commission. I have a rather lengthy report, so I'll try to move along as quickly as possible in regards to that. An application was submitted for a townhome project development at Livenoy and Haldane. The applicant proposes 45 units on the attached 2.6-acre site. The 45 units will be distributed in seven buildings. Of those seven buildings, two will actually front on Livenoy, one will front on Haldane, and the remaining four will be located around an internal drive system. We do note that all parking is located within garages or in the driveways of the units. The site consists of eight parcels. All the parcels will be combined. We do note that there is two separate zoning designations on this development. The front two parcels, which are the large two parcels that front on Livenoy, those are zoned neighborhood node. The back six parcels, which are the smaller parcels, are zoned RT1 family attached. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning to rezone those back six parcels to neighborhood node to be consistent with the front two parcels, and the site plan as submitted is a condition of the rezoning. We do note that on page two of our report, we did put together a table that outlines the bulk regulation differences between the RT zoning and the neighborhood node zoning for the Planning Commission's reference, and I can get into that if there's any specific questions from the Planning Commission in regards to that. In regards to the master plan, we do note that the entire site is noted as neighborhood node in the recently adopted master plan, and specifically for this node, the master plan states that a low-intensity use, working in conjunction with another to form a central neighborhood village that is walkable and accessible, would create an ideal complement to the predominantly residential surroundings. We do note that the proposed townhome development is a rather low intense use as to what would be permitted, under permitted zoning, for that district. In regards to the conditional rezoning, there are five standards that the Planning Commission should consider. These include the protection of public health, safety, and welfare, the consistency with the master plan, if the conditions proposed are consistent with the zoning designation which you're seeking the rezoning to, if the development can be served by public services, and lastly, is the proposed development or rezoning compatible with adjacent use of the land. We do look at those five standards. We do support the findings of those five standards, and we do overall support the rezoning. We do note that it is consistent with the master plan. The form-based district would allow flexibility for a better-developed project. The conditions offered by the applicant do reasonably protect the adjacent properties. The site can be served by public services, and lastly, the rezoning should not unreasonably impact surrounding properties. However, we do note that that support of that rezoning is conditioned upon specific items to be addressed in the site plan itself, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. In particular, we've outlined two points of discussion for the Planning Commission to consider and for the applicant to address to the satisfaction of the Planning Commission. In addition, we have listed 12 other items as a condition of approval. We do note that most of those 12 items are rather insignificant and minor and can be addressed pretty easily. However, there are a few conditions that do need some consideration by the applicant. The first point for discussion is the relationship between the back two buildings and the adjacent R2 properties. And specifically, I'm speaking to where Mr. Savanat has his hand, where I have the red lime. These are the area under which the applicant is seeking the rezoning to neighborhood node. We do note that the length of these linear buildings are 125 feet and 115 feet in length. The applicant is proposing a height of 36 feet and a setback of 30 feet from this adjacent property line. Just for comparison's sake, if this were to remain RT zoning, the applicant would be restricted to a height of 30 feet and a setback of 35 feet. So this relationship specifically to this adjacent property should be considered by the Planning Commission. Which leads us to our second point, and that is, the applicant is proposing a foot, 15-foot setback along Livenoy. As the Planning Commission is well aware, the required setback line in a form-based district is 10 feet, so the applicant is asking for an additional five feet to setback from Livenoy. We do find that if the applicant were able to pull these buildings forward five feet to be at the 10 feet, they could basically push the development further closer to Livenoy and gain an additional five-foot setback in their rear to provide a little bit more buffer. So those are two issues that we'd like the Planning Commission to discuss, specifically the location of the 15-foot on Livenoy, as well as the relationship between these adjacent properties and those long string of buildings. In regards to the 12 items that are noted in our report, again, most are minor, however there are three that we do find should be discussed by the Planning Commission. The first is in relation to the grading and specifically the location of the proposed drive aisle along the northern property line. That drive aisle is placed adjacent to the northern property line. In the preliminary grading reviewed by engineering, they do note that the grading doesn't reconcile between the adjacent properties, and they note that there will have to be some work done. If the location of the drive stays where it is, there will probably have to be some work done on adjacent property. The applicant has not obtained an easement to do that work, and so to do that work, they'd either have to obtain an easement, or they have to shift the driveway down approximately three to five feet in order to put that drive in its location and meet grading. In addition, we did receive a letter from the property owner that owns this dentist's office in this location. There is a wall that is approximately in this location. He has expressed concern about the proximity of the drive in relation to that wall and the potential damage to that wall. So we do ask that the applicant either provide the necessary grading, obtain the necessary easement, and/or shift the drive aisle down in order to do the work on their own property and make the grading lines match up. The second item for discussion is the issuance of the traffic study. The applicant did submit the traffic study. It was reviewed by the city's traffic engineering consultant, and in their report, they do note two issues of concern that were to be addressed by the applicant. The first is the time in which they took this traffic study. They noted it was on a half-day at the elementary school, and as such, the traffic volume counts were rather low, so they've asked him to do a secondary day of study to ensure the traffic counts are sufficient. And the second one is the concern of the left-hand turn from Haldane onto Livenoy, and that should be potentially limited to certain hours, and that was also supposed to be addressed by the applicant. They did receive comments in early May, however, to my knowledge, they have not resubmitted a traffic study for the city's consideration. And last, the last challenge is in regards to parking. We do note that the applicant has provided the required parking on-site for the particular units. These are located within the garage, as well as additional guest parking in driveways. However, we do note that there is no common guest area parking anywhere on the site, and the applicant has not indicated there's going to be any street parking, and if so, it would have to be reviewed by the fire department to ensure that there's no issue with circulation. If adequate guest parking is not provided on-site, there is a concern that parking could spill over into the neighborhood and cause potential issues for surrounding neighbors. So those are the three major challenges for the applicant to address as part of our review. The remaining items include landscape, sidewalk width, lighting, et cetera, are rather minor, and we feel those can be addressed in a resubmital. So in summary, we do support the rezoning. It does meet the requirements of standards of the rezoning. It is consistent with the master plan. However, it's contingent upon these specific items to be addressed as part of site plan review. So with that, I open to any questions from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Carlet. Any questions? Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, Mr. Carlet. If the drive to the north were moved three to five feet, as was perhaps suggested, what would that do to that center, what is it, like a village green kind of thing going down through the matter?
Yeah, that's, it's, that's a great question, and one that we actually did consider. I'm trying to pull up the plans in terms of what the, so that, this, where's my pointer? This center courtyard is about 40 feet in width. These are sidewalks that run throughout it. If they shifted this down five feet, this would narrow this from 40 feet to 35 feet in width. It would still meet all the zoning requirements. It would just be five feet less in width to do planting and sidewalks and provide for courtyard space, but it wouldn't affect the zoning by any means.
Okay, thank you.
The requirement or the suggestion to prohibit a left turn from Haldane to Livenoy, would that be the city's engineering department or police to actually provide that TCO and prohibit that, because that would actually impact the entire neighborhood? So how was that?
I think they were looking, they were looking for a reasonable information as part of the traffic study to determine if that was required or not. They did raise it as a question to be considered, and I know, I think the traffic consultant is from, is here on behalf of the applicant explaining that more than I can. But my understanding was they asked for that as in addition to supplement the existing traffic study, and I don't believe the applicant has done that at this point.
Okay. Any other questions? Just Mr. Edmonds.
Another question. The abutting homes, is it Niles? What's the height of those buildings? Those four existing buildings are?
I don't know the height of them. I can tell you that they are all duplexes, and the maximum height in that district is 30 feet. I can't confirm that those are or not 30 feet, but the maximum height is 30 feet.
Thank you.
Is that 30 at peak or 30 between?
30 as we measure the definition of height, which is midpoint, if it's a peak roof, the midpoint of the peak.
Okay. Any other questions before we ask the applicant to come forward? No questions, and we'll open it up. We'll ask the applicant to please come forward, or the applicant representative.
I'm Mark Abenatha with Alexander Bogarts, the architects and planners for the project. Well, as you know, because we came and we were in front of you on an introductory level to introduce the project, we spent a great deal of time working on the project at an early stage. We like to, as a firm, come in and meet with staff, run the project by the staff on a preliminary basis. We did that. We got review comments from them. And then we came and saw you and introduced the site and introduced the architecture. And the plans that you have in front of you right now are actually what we consider an improvement to those comments. We felt like we respected those comments, listened to them, and actually improved on them. So I'd like to go through the site and briefly go through the comments. I also have Jim Butler with PEA, the civil engineer here tonight. He's going to speak specifically to the concerns about the grading at the wall. And we also have Julie Crowell with the traffic consultant, who's going to specifically speak to the traffic concerns. We're very excited about the project. We think that it's a great fit for not only the city's view of the neighborhood node, but for this particular site. As Ben mentioned, this site could have a lot more density on it. It could have a lot more height on it. It's allowed to go up to 55 feet of height. It could be mixed-use, retail, commercial, and residential. But the market demand that the developer looks at here is residential, and we feel that this is meeting a niche that the community doesn't have right now. People that want to come in and live in the community that might not be able to afford higher-end single-family can come into this product. And not only young families, shared living, but we've even put in what we're calling a hybrid that has an elevator in it, where empty nesters can move into this, and if they wanted to buy a unit and install that elevator, they could live in the unit as well, even though they're three stories. So we think that we're meeting market demand, that we're meeting the spirit and the intent of the community's desire for this parcel, and we think we're really respecting what's going on around it. That's the first thing that we do when we design a project, is look at what's going on around it. The discussion about building height and massing relative to the adjacent properties, the minimum setback is 30 feet, which we're meeting. Typical single families range from 30, and I'm talking, single-family residential building heights range from 30 to 35 feet to the midpoint of the roof. We're 34 feet and 36. We've created interest in our architecture and the roofline. That's where the 36 comes from. So we're right in that sweet spot of 35 feet. And we discussed this entire edge here, and what our feeling is, there's, I'm going to go through each point, but there's three options to that. One is to leave it as it is and do some additional planting, because we think it's a reasonable transition. Two, add additional planting and leave it where it is. Or three, to move it as Ben mentioned. However, we don't want to move it the way he was looking at doing it, because we touched on this when we met with staff, and also, I believe we talked about it when we were with you, that even though we've pulled the buildings up close to the street, which I think is the spirit of what the city's looking for in terms of having that architecture close to the street, the residents that are going to live in these units here want to have some sense of privacy to the busy traffic that's on Livenoy Road. And ultimately, we don't know if this is going to get widened, what might happen. So what we're trying to do is create a little bit of private space for them. 10 feet right on top of that sidewalk is pretty tight. So 15 feet allows us to have a nice little patio area for them. We've created a very unique niche in the market. We have a den down on that lower level, aside from our garage and our entries, and so people can go down and have office space or living space in that den, and then off that den go out to a patio. Could you pull up the renderings a minute, Brent? So you see here, these are the elevations on Livenoy, and what I'm talking about is this space here. Could you show that little view down into the patio? So this is what we're envisioning, a little bit of a hedge and a patio area, and in order to do that and get the space that we'd like to have, we'd like to have that little bit of a buffer. So that's why we'd like to keep that 15 feet, and it was my understanding that the Planning Commission has the ability to approve the building within 30 feet. Is that a correct statement? So, the fact that we think we're respecting what the community's looking for and yet providing what the residents, we believe, are looking for, we think that's a good mix, and we'd like to hope that the Planning Commission would see it that way. Could you go back to the site plan a minute, please? So what we're proposing, if we do decide to move it, is we have a nice 17-foot dimension on either end of these buildings, and should you want to hold 35 feet here, we could take two and a half feet out of this green belt right here, and two and a half feet out of this green belt, and shift this drive and building over and provide the 35 feet. And we're willing to do that. Obviously, we think it's fine where it is. We can add additional, we've already added pines here. We could add more pines and leave it where it is and leave the green belt here, or we can do what I said, shift these over and take that out of this space. But we definitely do not want to take it out of this space, because we feel that that's very important to the people that are going to live there. These residents, their privacy is important, but so is the privacy to these new residents that are going to live there. We think that's a very important point. If you could go to the renderings, I'd like to talk about the architecture a little bit. When I was in front of you with the intro, we didn't have our renderings, and I know renderings were important to you, and we always provide them with our projects, so we did two of them. We did this view along Livenoy and along Haldane to give you a real sense of how the project's going to present to the streetscape. And I mentioned that we did a lot of detailing on the architecture to try and create interest in these buildings, give them that townhouse brownstone look. And so we've provided three different, or four different color schemes, starting with this color scheme with a little darker brick and a cream color into a lighter whitewashed with a lighter brick down below, and then a little different lighter brown brick here with a brown siding, a little deeper gray here, and then we've added a fifth color with the blue, and we've kind of repeated that pattern down. We've got different detailing with these small shed and gable hip roofs here, as well as our dormers, double windows, archtop windows, different gables, and different pops in the roofline. So I think that we've created a lot of interest. The siding materials are going to be a cementaceous-based hardy plank, so between that and the bricks, we think we have a real durable product. If you could go to the other rendering. The interior of the product, we've switched the color schemes up to where we have the whitewash on the end. We've put a great deal of detailing into the garage doors and the small entry details, offering a balcony in certain instances when the buyers want it. So we think we have both a lot of character on the interior of the project as well as the exterior. Could you go back to the Livenoy? In terms of each one of the items, I'm just going to go through them quickly. We've talked about A, what I'd consider the first one of A and B, and also the 15-foot. Jim, I'm going to have Jim come up when I'm done with this and go through the grading. The sidewalk that Ben mentions and was reviewed, we had talked about that in great detail with staff, as well as when we met with you. We have 20 feet in front from the garage door to the sidewalk. That will fit an escalade, and an escalade being somewhat under 18 feet, that'll allow some clearance in front of the garage, still have people walk past on a five-foot sidewalk. Plus, you have a 28-foot road, and I mentioned at that time that my preference would be smaller roads, more green, but I understand the city has standards and we're meeting those, but my preference, once again, would be to decrease the size of those roads, get more green on the project. I think it fits the scale of the project more, but as I said, we've designed it to meet that. So that's the sidewalks. Access for future maintenance, I'm going to let Jim speak to that. On-site guest parking. Each one of these units is going to have a two-car garage. Now, we've noted in our legend, one car, because there were some early comments from staff about the width of a space, a parking space being nine feet. These are smaller, tighter garages, but they'll still park two cars. So these are going to be marketed and used as two-car garage. Each one of the spaces, apron spaces, will hold two cars. So each one of these units has four cars per. Now, as we discussed in our preliminary, but we didn't note on the actual site plan where we're going to show it, but if you could go back to the site plan, please? Because they're 28 feet wide, we had said up along this northern edge, we're going to have seven on-street parking spaces here. My preference would be to make this 24 feet and flare it back out for those, but it's shown as 28 feet. So seven parking spaces here, four parking spaces here, four parking spaces So seven parking spaces here, four parking spaces here, four parking spaces here. So you have four parking spaces per unit, plus you have 15 guest spaces. And those guest spaces are noted in the legend that the civil engineer produced. The only difference is we've shown one per garage. So in our opinion, this site is more than adequately parked and has guest parking on Supplemental vegetation, we've kind of talked about. Trash, all of these units will have garages. All of them will have trash in the garage. They will all be like, single-family. It'll be individual pickup, based on scheduled pickups with a carrier. Site lighting. This is always something that comes up now, and it's, it's as though there's a, an area in most of the community's ordinances that don't really fit these kind of projects, in my opinion. And a lot of communities are agreeing with that. I know that communities want to have full cutoff, and they want to shield and protect adjacent neighbors. But the lighting on this is going to be no different than single-family lighting. It's beautiful lighting that addresses the needs of this, which is basically to have a very safe, but low-lit environment. So people are comfortable and feel safe. There'll be lights at each of the garage doors. There'll be house lights. And we're going to have a few pole lights that will add supplemental lighting. Even though these are not direct cutoff, the lighting level is going to be so low, it's going to be no different than a single-family subdivision. And it's not going to generate a lot of glare off-site, and it's not going to generate a lot of glare that's going to impact the residents or the road. So what we've asked a lot of communities, when we've done these projects, is to grant a waiver, or because this is a special condition, as part of the special condition agreement, that we could work something out, that we could look at these fixtures and use them. If you don't agree with that, there are commercial fixtures that have somewhat of a residential look. I don't believe they're appropriate for the project. And I think with the beauty of this and what we're all trying to do, I think that these fixtures are much more appropriate. That pretty much wraps up what I want to have to, what I have to say about most of the comments. I'm going to ask Jim to come up, and then we'll have Julie come up. But one last thing that I want to say is that, and I mentioned it in our intro meeting, the developer is very anxious to get this in the ground. And we're reaching a point of timing issues with permits and everything else. So if there's any way that the planning commission could see fit, we respectfully ask that you approve this plan tonight, recommending approval to City Council, from a timing standpoint. As Ben mentioned, I believe that these are all very minor. Site plan approval final is administrative. You could make it contingent on these items being addressed, and we could move the project forward. So we'd really ask you to do that. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have, once Jim and Julie are done. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Jim Butler with PEA. I'm going to talk about the retaining or the screen wall. There's an existing screen wall at the northwest corner of the site, adjacent with this building that is in close proximity to the site. We do have some photographs that we did take of that wall that I can share, just so you get a kind of an idea of the context of the wall. As you can see, it's a preformed, brick-embossed, concrete wall. It is located exactly, we went out on a survey as a part of our work, is exactly on that north property line. The proposed curb line that we're installing is located one foot south of that wall. It's actually about 1.1 feet. Went back this afternoon, looked at some of the grades that we had established as a part of our grading plan. I think there's a way that we can adjust those grades, that we would match the exact same property line elevation, such there would not be any issues associated with any off-site grading, drainage, things like that. So I think we can accommodate that without causing any distress to that existing wall. And remember, that wall only extends to where, kind of where that car is at. You see on the north property line there. Obviously, there's going to be another extension to that. The city engineering department also had a comment related to access to a pump station. And Ben, if I can get you to, or Ben or Brent?
You want the grading plan, Jim?
Grading plan, utility plan, it's fine. There's good. If you can give me a cursor up to the one corner up there with a note. Keep going over. There we go. Now I can play. Right here.
Okay, sorry.
The sanitary sewer, or not sanitary, but the storm sewer for this site is extremely shallow. We're having to do some underground detention to handle our stormwater that's being generated by the site. So we're going to be installing a small, little lift station in this location. It's located about 20 feet from the back of that curb, and this is all intended to be greenbelt. The city engineering department asked if we could provide some sort of paved access to that, if necessary. We can certainly work that detail out with them. Again, it's only 20 feet, but if we need to provide it, we certainly would be willing to do that. Julie?
I'm Julie Kroll, I'm with Fleece and Vannenring. We did the traffic engineering for the site. So when we first scoped the project, we talked to city engineer Bill Hootery to talk about what we needed to do for this project. So for this project, the trip generation was pretty low, so we really didn't need a full traffic study. But because it was a rezoning, he asked for a few things. So that's what you saw in the study. Some of the concerns primarily were the left-turn lane, if we needed to put a left-turn lane for northbound Livernoy onto Haldane, and how, and also on Square Lake. And then if there was any cut-through traffic, because that was something that he had heard frequently from the neighborhood. So what we did was we collected data at Livernoy and Square Lake, and then Haldane intersection and up at Square Lake as well. And what we ended up finding out was there really wasn't any cut-through traffic. Most of the traffic on the adjacent streets were from the neighborhood. When we see a cut-through problem, it's really, really evident, because you'll see very directional flow, whereas if somebody's trying to avoid the intersection, they'll make a left on Haldane and then cut around. And we didn't see any of that. It was all really, really low traffic volumes. So that one item, we kind of were able to dismiss, that it really wasn't an issue right now with cut-through. So then the next thing we looked at was, do we need left-turn lanes? So when we do that, we take the traffic volumes, we put them in a model called Synchro, and we take a look at, do the traffic, does the traffic back up on Livernoy, on Square Lake, such that it would block Haldane and therefore require the extension of a left-turn lane for vehicles turning left? And when we modeled it, we did not see that the driveway was going to, the roadway was going to be blocked, or anything that would indicate to us that we need to put in a left-turn lane. We also plotted them on the road commission's charts, as noted by OHM, your consultant. And one thing that they noted here in the comments was that we used traffic volumes during, in the PM, when school was out the half-day. However, the volumes that we use in those charts, we didn't actually collect. Those are road commission counts that were collected by Oakland County. So the data that they're referring to isn't even the same data. So the data that she's, they say, you know, is higher ADT, is that's actually what we used in the study to evaluate whether a left-turn lane was warranted. So we looked at those. It was right on the border. And then, so we look at the two things, the modeling and the charts. So, and when we're talking numbers, the existing left turn is 10 vehicles, northbound, 10 vehicles turning left on Haldane. And then with our proposed development, we're looking at 18. So those are relative, that's in an hour. So that's a really, really small number of left turns. 10 existing, we're adding eight with our site, that are going to be trying to turn left. So the concern with restricting the left turns, as noted in these comments, is that you're going to be restricting more than half of the existing traffic that turns left there, in addition to the new traffic that will be generated by the site. So when we looked at our traffic models, if we can adjust the signal timing with the road commission, which they do frequently, when this site goes in, we can tweak those timings to reduce the queues on Livernoy, and we'll have no problems turning in and out of Haldane. So the other reason we didn't collect additional data is because, as you know, the construction on 75 and the closure of Adams ramps has caused significant traffic delays throughout Troy. And for us to collect data at this point in time, it would be completely different than if we collect data later. So I don't want to go out and collect data right now and redo the study, because we're going to end up with a result that's not really representative of what this is actually going to operate at. So the fact that we did the counts when there was a half-day, we didn't evaluate the school peak, which is actually at 3:00 PM. We evaluated 6:00 PM. So even on a half-day, people are still commuting, and it was just the elementary school. So we didn't see that as a major reason to go back out and redo this study, just because of that particular instance of the school being out in the afternoon. So if you have any other questions about traffic, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments for the applicant? At this point?
I guess I have some.
Mr. Deagle?
Like the architect, come on back. Would you firm responsible for the site planning of the property?
Yes.
One of the concerns we've heard with developments similar to this is the massing of the buildings up against the yards of those adjacent properties.
Okay.
Can you tell us the merits of the building placements, as you've put on this plan, as opposed to maybe some different placements of the buildings to reduce the massing impact that it has on those homes immediately to the west?
Well, there's a lot of things that went into the overall design, and we looked at a number of different ways of relating the buildings. But the first thing that you look at is what the community is looking for in terms of how these buildings create a street front, which is what really starts to set it up. So you see the buildings that are aligned along Livernoy and aligned along Haldane. Initially, this curb cut was not here on some of our earlier studies. And we had more buildings facing here, smaller buildings here. We looked at some studies of turning the buildings facing this direction. But once all of the comments were in, and we ended up looking at the overall design, this is where you're at, from the standpoint of the buildings, the positioning of the buildings. Once you conclude that you're going to put this secondary loop in, that limits the amount of frontage here and the number of buildings here. So what we did was try to maximize that setback there, and then work the buildings across and set them back in relationship to this. You could try and move these buildings further over. But as I said, I really think that the mass of the buildings and the height of the buildings fits what you're trying to do. It's very, it's interesting. It does, we're working on projects in all different communities, all different densities, when we're talking multiple family, anything from 12 units to the acre, all the way up to, close to 50 units to the acre. There's always a fringe. You know, communities want, and planners want, and architects want, density. And when you have that density, and you have that node, or that downtown, whatever it is, small town, big town, there's always a fringe. And those residents that are on that fringe, this is part of it. We're working on a project right now in Ferndale, where the building's 45 feet adjacent to not even multiple family or duplex, single-family. And the people that live there, the residents that live there, they understand that. They understand that if they're going to live in a town or near a node, they're going to have that kind of differential in scale. But as I said, 35 feet is a very reasonable height, because that's a single-family height, not, it's not 45.
Yeah, but, okay.
So I'm just saying that that's part of it. And if you want this density and this mass, these are the results that you're going to have. You can, you can push the buildings as far as you want away, but then it starts to impact your density, it starts to impact your overall layout, and what you and the developer and the architects are looking to achieve.
Well, a couple of things from your comments. Number one, this is Troy, it's not Ferndale. There's a different mindset in this community. This is, I'll call it more of a suburban-focused community, or has-been, as opposed to a Ferndale, which is, which is more, has more of a downtown or a center core area. But as far as the, the massing, what you've done here is, you talk about the height, but when you look at the length of these buildings, we just had this discussion on another project. I mean, I don't know, how long are those two buildings that are on the west property line?
Ben, what did you say the dimensions were of them?
I measured at 115.
What's the width of the property?
115, 125.
About 250 feet?
115.
Right.
With the space, and then 125 feet in length.
Yeah, so 250 feet of building. You know, so I mean, you not only think about the vertical dimension, but the length of this dimension. You know, again, I'm certainly not sitting here telling you to redesign your site. But if you had taken those three central buildings, those core buildings in the middle, now if those were the end buildings on the west property line, and you took the two buildings that were on the west property line and mirrored them to the two buildings that were on the Livernoy property line, now you've created two frontages, buildings facing each other, similar to what you did in the two center buildings, and you've started to reduce that impact, that visual impact, that you have along the west property line, because you're looking at the end of a building, as opposed to 250-foot-long of building. So I just, I'm concerned that, you know, again, we've been down this road before. You know, we understand the residents' concern. This is a Troy, this isn't a Ferndale. And so there's a different mindset here.
Yeah, I always hesitate to bring up other communities. I wasn't doing that to compare Ferndale to you at all. What I was trying to do is say that, and this is not a downtown, as far as Ferndale. What I was trying to say is, when you have mass, when you try and do what you're trying to do here, and as I said in the beginning, these buildings could be 55 feet high under your ordinance. You've master-planned it, you've allowed for that. So I'm saying that we respected that, we're looking at that, and that when you have mass, when you have height, if that's what you're looking for, and I think it's great, I really do, more density in a core area, this is a great transition to the commercial, you're going to have fringe to it. So whether...
The integration of your density to the low-density next door, I think, could be done a little bit more sensitive.
Yep, you're entitled to that. I think that this plan, moving those buildings over and fronting them on the other building, you lose open space, you lose interest as you drive down the street. You have buildings that tunnel as you drive down the street. If I was to move these two buildings right here and put them right here, then you create a tunnel down through here, and you have all fronts fronting these garages, all fronting one another, versus this open space, this open space here, and the ends of these buildings, the scale of these buildings. So we could talk about planning all day, and I respect your opinion. This is the way we think it was best to do it, so I, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one question. The rendering that was shown earlier showed the patios along Livernoy. Is that an option to the buyer, or all units getting that exact patio as shown, regardless of which building it is?
We, each, each unit on the site can have a patio. This is the design that we were proposing for Livernoy.
Okay, so are you saying that it can have it? Is that an option to the buyer, or is that just a, does every unit actually have that patio built into it? patio built into it? So all units are actually with that patio, identical?
At this point in time, that's the general direction, yes, that that's what we're going to do, provide that. That hasn't been specifically, we haven't discussed that specifically with the developer, how they're going to market and everything, but that's, that's the goal, that's what we'd like to provide for.
Okay, so these units along Livershaw, by cutting that down, that setback down five feet, you actually would be cutting into that patio-
Yeah, outdoor living space.
Just for these units and you would have a different patio size, a different patio size for the other units, right? So they wouldn't be identical if this site would be reduced by five feet setback?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I might understand that this may not be what the end product looks like as far as a fifteen-foot patio in front of every unit? I mean, you were a little hesitant to say that the developer may not, or you, I don't know if the developer's committed to this yet?
This is our understanding of how the project's going to go forward. Now whether or not this, he says that this is an optional patio, I haven't specifically discussed that with him. As far as I know, this is the way it's going to go.
This is what we're voting on. I mean, we're voting on a site plan that you're presenting here to us.
This is what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Quick question. I don't know who of your staff would handle this, but I was reading through some of the comments from the neighbors and they'll probably express it too, but you're saying Haldane's going to be paved entirely, the dirt part's going to be totally paved. Who's paying for that?
That Haldane's going to be paved?
It's not, it's being paved in our, our apartment. Oh, fuck, yeah. Okay, and when you pave that, are you going to be providing the driveway aprons to those, those homes would be on the south side of Haldane? Or is it just going to be their pavement, dirt, and then pavement again? You know, driveway apron is between the driveway and the actual road?
I think I'm going to let the civil talk to that.
It's a good question. I haven't gotten to that detail of the engineering yet. I would think that any disruption we would create by the construction of our road, our road extension, we would provide in-kind replacement.
Okay, but again, I just, this would be, you'd be supplying the driveway aprons for those two homes or not?
I haven't worked out the engineering at this point. I'm not to a point where I can answer that question. If we would disrupt it because of grading activities, we would certainly replace it in kind.
Okay, I think they're dirt at this point, so.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I just, so that would be probably up to the homeowner then to put that apron in because it's, it's in the right-of-way, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's part of the right-ofways, but it's not their property. You know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I don't have an answer for you. I haven't physically done the engineering on that and have not had a discussion with the engineering department about what the expectation would be.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
As a follow-up, how many homes are involved there?
One, two, it looks like three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So how, there's a small section of Haldane that's adjacent to the applicant's property starting at this point to about the end of their property line that is not paved. The applicant was responsible to pave this section and there are two homes that front on the non-paved portion of Haldane. And I believe this entrance, exit off this offlane is actually part on the, on the paved section, so essentially there would be two driveways in question about what that would be replaced with. Could that clarify your questions, Mr. Edmonds?
Thanks.
And I think that's relatively minor. I, I think we should ask if the developer is willing to offer that as part of the conditional rezoning.
I guess, I have a follow-up question on the same topic of paving. It looks like as it is, the existing today, it's pretty much gravel shoulders. Are you proposing curb along that stretch? Is that a continuation of curb of what's existing there or is that just asphalt paving? And another question would be similar to what Mr. Krent asked, if those two driveways to that duplex there are part of the paving for the approaches as well as the actual approach to that side road? What's a sidewalk to the south there? East Canham? Yes. Is that going to have, is that being paved as an approach to that road or is that, are you, is that being paved in line with the actual right-of-way line? What is being proposed, at least what is intent even without any engineering at this point?
At this point, we are, we are providing pavement and curbing along the north side. So the whole, the whole thing is curbed at this point. Right now, the section that is paved, according to our survey, shows it being paved all the way, I think Ladd's Realty is to the south and it stops at the east radius point. From there, we are going to pave, we are going to put curbing gutter on the north side, which faces in front of our development, and carry that to a point to the far west drive. At that point, the curb line drops. On the south side, because it's all ditches at this point, we are just creating a shoulder and surface draining to the ditches is what's being proposed. I don't know the surface of those two existing duplex unit drives, I don't know what those are. What's being proposed, if we touch it or have to do something to it, we would repave it. Again, we don't have that planned out at this point. Chatham, it's, I believe it's dirt at this point. Again, we have not made a plan for it. I don't know how to answer that question.
Okay, so I guess what I'm, I'm trying to kind of just get some clarification as to the intent. If your intent is to just to curb the north side of Haldane and leave the south side existing as a ditch-
Yep.
And a shoulder?
Yes.
Including the, where the actual approaches are to the duplex and to the, to the road?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct. That's a correct statement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Carlisle.
In fairness to the applicant, these are, these are typically questions and details get worked out after preliminary site plan and so whatever, if this does go forward and is approved ultimately by city council, they'll be required to meet whatever the city standards are for the road. And so that would be a detail that they would work out as part of the engineering process.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I have one more question regarding to the, the actual setback off the north property line there where the wall is. You mentioned that what's being proposed there is about a foot and a few inches off that wall?
Yes.
Can you elaborate in terms of constructability of how can you, how, how can that road and that curbing gutter be physically constructed without encroaching on the northern property, without an easement? What, how, how do you intend to do that?
Well, it's going to be, need to be handwork, the curbing. You can't put a curb machine back through because of the distance, so it'll be, have to be hand-formed. There's enough room, a foot is enough room to be able to do that. They'd have to work from this side, but they can do that. We're not going to alter the grade, so it's not like you're going to be cutting significantly or filling significantly. You're essentially cutting out, forming it, and pouring it.
Grade work as well?
The grade work is, the grade work, obviously, they, there's going to be a little bit of grade work, you got to strip off the topsoil and get, and get down to an aggregate subbase for the asphalt pavement. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Krent.
I have a follow-up on your question, your, your comments. Okay, so you've got that one foot, one inch from the wall to the street and there's that curb, I'm talking the north, the road on the north edge of the property. Now, some vehicles, they're going to be parking along that, the northern border of that street, correct?
That is the plan.
Okay, for seven cars, I would have heard earlier.
Yes.
Some cars have quite a bit of overhang between the wheel and the back bumper or the front bumper. My concern is that one foot between the curb and that wall, some cars as they back in, they're going to hit that wall. One foot doesn't sound like a lot of room for a large vehicle.
Well, the vehicles do overhang, like a parking, like a head-in parking. I would share that concern. Typically, we have two, two and a half feet of that. There's, there is, is there a possibility? Sure. There's a possibility that somebody could back in and head it, sure.
Well, I'd like to see closer to two and a half feet, three feet, that, that distance between that curb and that wall. Just, just one foot is awful tight. And again, I'm trying to prevent things from happening in the future and I realize one foot here or there is important, but I think for, for safety, protection of the wall from the property owner to the north and also the feeling of the people that are parking there, that they're not, you know, trying to thread a needle with their vehicle into a parking spot. I think that extra foot between the curb and the wall would be a smart move.
I was trying to find a photograph that I had and I can't find it this second, exact second, because I mean, they, their parking is adjacent to it as well, where they have that circumstance.
Are they?
I've been trying to find the photograph.
I'm the owner of that property.
Yeah, okay. Comments later on that?
I'm parked inside.
Hold on, we'll open up the public hearing and you'll get a chance to comment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there, just for education, the aerial's not here, but there is, this is about the, this is the back end of the building and there's a, there's a trash dumpster enclosure location here. There is parking that runs this length, there is a spot that is directly adjacent to the existing wall on the dentist's office site.
Just the other point of that is, you know, we do have twenty-eight feet of driving, not like we're asking to park in a narrow alleyway, so there is twenty-eight feet. And to your point, I mean, is it a possibility? Sure. But people are going to park, be able to open up that side door, they're going to park away from that area. They're not going to park immediately up against that curb.
Yeah, so that's the point too, opening that door.
Right, they're-
Passenger side.
Right, somebody's going to, someone's going to be pulled away from that, that wall and that area, be able to do that.
Did you mention earlier that there is, that wall is being extended along that property line? There's a continuation of a new wall is being proposed over that existing wall?
Which side is the wall? No, we're not.
I, I don't, I didn't see that in the plans.
I don't believe we are.
No, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Carlisle, can you point out where that wall actually ends exactly? Like if we can get a report off the aerials?
I think it ends in this approximate location.
Yeah.
And so I guess, Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Is this where you're saying there's a foot, actual foot separation?
Yeah, there's a foot, one, if you keep going, Mr. Carlisle, you say where the, the line between the north wall, right where your cursor kind of is, right there is where it tightens right now.
The wall that-
That's where you see that wall in that photograph that I shared.
Can you scroll up a little, Mr. Savadon? So this one, is this point eleven?
That wall is, that is where it is north of our property line, that much.
The wall is?
The face of that wall is that much.
Okay.
So it's on their physical property, by one tenth.
I guess my thought on that wall is, it's, if it comes to that point and it ends right there, there would be probably two options, either place a no parking sign beyond that point and try to somehow enforce that where it's almost self-enforcing, where the, nobody's going to park there because if they can't open the door, they'll park on the side of the other, on the east side of the wall where they can actually open a door.
Yeah, that's a good example, that's a good illustration up there, based on what you're talking about. So you see where those cars are parked, right?
Right.
So the car just north of the parking lot, if you flip that over, that would be on the other side of the wall and what you're, you're suggesting, doing what you're suggesting, one space.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? So this is a public hearing and a public hearing is an opportunity for residents to share their comments on a specific project with the planning commission. Everyone in attendance who wishes to speak will be provided with an opportunity to speak. We appreciate everyone who came out tonight to share their thoughts with the planning commission. Your comments are important. Before I open up the public, a public hearing, it is important to set up some ground rules so that it can be an effective and efficient public hearing. Please remember to sign in and begin your comments by stating your name and address for the public record. Please address all comments to the chair. Please be respectful of the planning commission, the consultants, the applicant, and those in the audience. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The timer in the front will be, will have the yellow light turn on when you're, when you have one minute left. When the red light comes on, it indicates that your time is up. This is an opportunity for residents to provide comment. It is not a discussion or a debate. We respectfully request that you refrain from talking, clapping, or cheering during the meeting. Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, please come forward and sign in.
I didn't realize I signed in before. My name is Dr. Donald Casey. I am the gentleman that owns the property directly north of that, that has that wall. I only have certain questions that I have to ask, which it is, there's a current rezoning for a lot, parcel number is eight-eight-two-zero-zero-nine-two-two-eight-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-one-one. When I built that building in nineteen eighty-three, the gentleman that owned the property this project is on was Judge Barnard, appropriate judge, and there was a unique design to the lots. I owned supervisor plat number seven and I owned the seven, eight, nine, and ten with a vacated Canham Street. When in fact, he saw this wall going forward, he was pretty upset being that he was a gentleman of country origin, he had horses and sheep in his area. So he told me point blank that I couldn't build that wall and I said I had to for the city. So he made an agreement with me and I purchased the north nine feet of the lot you're rezoning, lot number eleven. And I also swapped out the south thirty-two feet of the supervisor plat, which is about where those cars are parked on my driveway. And the end result is that, to even out the road. I only want to make sure that during the course of this rezoning, there's two things that I brought up. Number one, the wall problem, and number two, that the zoning is correctly stated, that I still own and take care of and that is not rezoning part of my land in that one particular lot, lot number eleven. The adjacent wall issue that I am worried about besides that is the fact of who's responsible for the damage to that, that will occur? How about the incident of necessarily the safety concerns and who's the responsibility for the insurances of that wall on that side if it's only allowed one foot? I ask that if you could possibly see it in yourself to move that project down. I applaud any movements forward for this project. That's not the problem. I'm not trying to stop in any way, shape. I just don't want someone to turn around and injure themselves since that's property, that wall's on my property, ending up suing me because of something they did. You all know, you drive along in Michigan, we have icy conditions and slippery conditions. If you're driving north on whatever that name road is and it goes to Road A or whatever that road is called, and it doesn't get the traction they need, they're going to crash into my wall. And then they're going to break my wall and also hurt themselves. And hurting themselves is of the most concern. All I want is someone to be able to address the issues of safety, damage, and insurances and maybe we could come to agreement that we could move the driveway or roadway down enough that that would not be an issue.
Thank you.
I'm thank you, I'm sorry for the, over going to time.
Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item?
Hi. My name is Armande Chabaye. I'm not prepared, I was just here with my husband, we wanted to know what's going on. And we live in Niles Drive, so our house is, the second one is five-nine-four-two. So of course, no one wants like forty-five unit, you know, kind of apartments behind a house because it's a very small, quiet neighborhood. And what concerns me more is the traffic because right now, like I've been living there for seven years, I never ever made a left turn on Haldane Avenue. It's impossible. Like during traffic hours, during quiet hours in the morning, any time of the day, I never made a left turn because it's only one line and I don't know how they are going to plan like forty-five units in only one line, you know, Livershaw's is only one line. So when I come from work, like it's completely blocked from- So when I come from work, like it's completely blocked from Square Lake to Livernoy, it's like it's stuck. So if they want to change the lightning, it will be a longer traffic, which will take from Square Lake to Wattle's now. Because right now, one mile is completely, you know, like traffic doesn't move for one mile. So no one will make a left turn, and what I'm thinking is they're going to use, because some people still do that, they use Niles Drive to have a shortcut and to avoid the lightning, which takes forever to turn, you know, green. So we have little kids, and it's such a small, narrow road, and we already called police twice, because, you know, they speed, it's like a residential street, and they speed a lot. So I'm thinking now with 45 units times two, let's say two people, it will be like 90 cars that are going, are going to use that street. And again, like the traffic will, will back up one more mile. So traffic, it's a big issue for now. I think it's too crowded for such a small neighborhood and for such a small area, it's very crowded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you sign in?
Did you sign in, ma'am?
Uh-huh.
Any others, any audience that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing that I close the public hearing and bring it back to the table for discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One of the conditions for conditional rezoning is compatibility with adjacent land uses. I looked at that intersection and, is it a Q, Q node they're calling it? The node. They're all one-story buildings and stores, adjacent to it, residential areas. This is a massive project for such a small area. The massing especially of buildings A and B to the west against those homes is too high, it's too dense. It's like a massive wall, not individual units. This density is not compatible with the rest of the node. It's too big, it's too much for this project, and I don't think it's compatible, and I'm not in favor of any conditional rezoning with this existing land.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Grant?
This is regarding the dentist that has the office with, again, his parking lot, that wall adjacent to this development. My, my concern is, he was talking about he owns a property to the, is it the south of that wall? I'm a little unsure of how he, he labeled it as lot number three, and I'm looking at the drawing, and, um, lot 11, I see it on the drawing. Is the developer buying that from the dentist? I mean, how does that, how does that all work together? I'm trying to figure, figure this out. If he's, if it's going to be rezoned.
Mr. Carlisle? Can you clarify that, or can we get the engineer to clarify that in terms of?
Mr. Butler, can you do a little more clarification, then I can jump in?
Yeah, I can certainly do that. Looking at the descriptions of the property he owns and what's in the email that was attached to the packet, he owns lots number seven, eight, nine, and 10, and part of 11. Highlighted it for you. This is lot number 10, and this is that nine feet of 11. This is what would have been lot number 11. That's the nine feet. Then the other part is lot seven. He owns everything but the south 32 feet, which is this. So the applicant has control of that. That's that nine feet, and that's parcel seven without 32. It says accepting 32 feet, the south 32, so that's it.
So it's only nine feet of-
This nine feet right here is what he owns, it's on his side of the wall. So lot number 11 was split. So nine feet was given to him. So this is, this right here would be what would known as unit number, or lot number 11. Says these are all equal units, you see? This one's shorter. So that's nine, and accept it out. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlisle, I have a question. Can you clarify, what is the maximum height of buildings allowed in?
Sure.
In the zoning district of what's existing and not what we're trying to rezone? Or, or the, whatever's being proposed for the project?
Yeah.
Permitted?
So, um, in totality, I keep losing my red dot here, I'm sorry. So in totality, the site is about two, is 2.6 acres. Approximately two-thirds of it is currently zoned neighborhood node. The applicant's front part, what they're proposing meets, is a by right development. It meets all the height requirements, the setback requirements, the density requirements, et cetera. The backend in question is whether seeking the rezoning. If the applicant was to come in and do a development without the rezoning, they could go a maximum of 30 feet in height, a maximum of 35 feet in this rear yard setback, and they'd have 25 feet off Haldain. So what they're asking for is relief of approximately six feet in height by, by doing the rezoning, a setback reduction of five feet in this adjacent property line, and a reduction of 15 feet essentially off Haldain. Did I answer your question?
What about node Q, the maximum height?
Fifty, fifty feet, yes, and so they're, they're well under the required, you know, well under the allowed maximum height. And I, and I will state that the, the purpose of the node in relation to the townhomes, what they're trying to do on the node really is what the vision of what the node is going to be. The, the issue that we have come up with in previous rezonings that we've dealt with recently is that transition between the existing development and the density and compatibility with those with what is being proposed. And that's where this question along this property line is why we're raising that point. But I will note that everything in the part that is zoned neighborhood node is, meets all the required zoning requirements of the neighborhood node, does not require any special approvals for that section.
Okay, just, just a couple thoughts. Yes, Mr.?
Just a follow-up question to that. You talked about the height and the setbacks, but what about the mass of the building? You had the 115-foot building, 125-foot building.
There's no, there's no, there's no standard regards of the length of a mass of a building. The reason we brought it up, because we do note that is a long stretch of building at a height that's higher than what you allow on the underlying zoning, at a setback that's five feet less of what the underlying zoning is doing. So what we're asking is that the planning commission, and I think you've had a very healthy discussion on this, is the relationship with that length of building, the height over what would be allowed in additional setback. We think there are, there is room that the applicant can do in terms of providing additional setback to allow some relief from that and the adjacent properties to the west. But there is no zoning standard per se in terms of the length of what that building is allowed or not allowed to be.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Taylor?
With the current zoning, west of the node, what is the, the density or the lot coverage allowed in that zoning?
It's 5,000 square feet per acre. I'm sorry, 5,000, 5,000 square feet per unit, minimum lot area, 5,000 square feet.
How does that compare with what they're proposing?
So if, if they were to keep that at RT, they would be allowed essentially eight units would be permitted on this section of the development. They're proposing essentially 12 of the 30, of the 45 units, 12 are relocated. They're asking for essentially four more units that would be allowed then under the RT zoning.
So in addition to the, the height deviation, the setback deviation, they're also, they're also looking for a density deviation by, by the conversion or by the rezoning?
Yeah, I will, I, yes. I will note that in the neighborhood node, there is no minimum lot area, so the density basically is controlled by the height, the setback, and the parking. So they are getting four additional units by the rezoning, but there's no, there's no minimum number of units or maximum number of units in the node if you can, if you can meet those requirements in terms of parking.
Well, yeah, but I think the point of the discussion here is that the allowable density in the node is now being asked to extend, but up against a different zoning district that is far less dense. And that, that really is the point, is, is that transitional area that you've talked about, we've talked about, that's of concern. If I may, just, just another question. I think it was the traffic engineer, or someone mentioned about a future right-of-way on Livernoy, and it was in regard to the 15-foot yard or patio area. Current right-of-way and future right-of-way, is that, do you know, do you guys know what that is?
May, I can tell you.
Okay, Mr. Hudson.
Fifteen years ago, there was some condemnation, it's along Livernoy, represented by one client, and another lawyer represented the Barnards. A future plan shows for a four-lane highway in Livernoy. This condemnation was for sewer and water. I already had a better lawyer, because he got relief. But there is future plans to widen Livernoy.
There is. I will note that, that Livernoy in relationship on the west side is very, very close, the existing right-of-way is very close to property line, and the actual roadway is very close to property line. There's much more room on the other side of Livernoy, so likely if Livernoy was to be expanded, they would, they would acquire more property on the other side than this side, but-
When you say other side, you mean on the east side?
Yes. We, we don't, I don't know of any plans, we don't know of any plans in the city to, to widen Livernoy at this point.
Okay. And, and just final comment, with regards to the traffic engineer, they had made some assumptions that need, that, you know, getting back with our engineering department because they felt that whether it was Adam's exit closure, or whether it was time of day, or whatever it was, and I'm a little concerned that they just take a position of, well, we didn't feel it necessary to do the additional study. I don't know, was there any communication with the city that they conveyed that to the city engineer that would at least allow the city engineer to respond to that?
I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the city engineer, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant. All I know is that a, the traffic study was reviewed by the engineering department and the traffic consultant for the city. Comments in relation to that, to that study were relayed to the applicant in early May, I think May 9th was the date, in an email, and as far as I has understood, that there was no correspondence back to the city. But I, but again, I'm not privy to all the emails that go back and forth with the engineering-
As far as you're concerned, the file reads that there's been no response to the city's review comments or-
As of the end of last week, my report was due, and, and confirming with the engineering department, they had not heard back from the applicant in regards to the traffic study. The comments still stood as to what the original traffic study-
And I think that's consistent to what the, the traffic engineer had expressed, that they didn't feel a need to, to do that for whatever reasons they felt were justifiable. Thank you.
Ms. Cooper?
There's a, the building massing on development that was done probably before I joined the planning commission. It's on Rochester and South Boulevard. How does that compare to what this would look like? Because seeing it on paper is one thing, but seeing that, just, do you remember that one? Was it as dense and the building massing as much as this one?
The Caswell Poundhouses.
What side of Rochester?
The southwest, southeast.
Southeast? The, the townhomes that are under construction now?
I think they're almost done.
They're about done, yeah. Across from Nino.
Give me a second. I need-
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's, uh, five. I think it's comparable, but let me see if I can find some numbers for you.
In the meantime, I just want to, I just shared some, I just did some numbers here on the, on the lot of what we have before us here. Two-thirds of that entire property is zoned neighborhood node. The applicant is permitted to go as high as 50 feet. What he's proposing is 14 feet, all buildings are 14 feet less. They're 14 feet lower than what actually is permitted. One-third of the property, under existing zoning, he's permitted a structure of 30 feet in height. He's proposing 36 and 34. So what we have is one-third of the property, he's proposing structures six feet higher than allowed. Two-thirds of the property, he's proposing all the structures 14 feet lower than he's permitted. So I'm looking at that in terms of what's being proposed and what's being allowed. Yes, Mr. Grant?
One of the requirements for conditional rezoning is transition features. Basically, this is, these features assist in mitigating potential conflicts between those uses, between the two uses, I'm talking between the residential and this. And if the applicant did not have that section rezoned and lowered it down to 30 feet and pulled the homes back five feet, which we were originally discussing, why rezone it? Is there, is there a problem with, you know, why can't they just go ahead with a minor reduction, I mean, of five feet or six feet in height and five feet back? He said he could knock, you know, pull it five feet back and knock a little of that two and a half feet of those two green spaces on the interior part. I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to find out why, maybe the city has an answer for that. Why do we need to rezone it?
I don't, I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant. These, when we had a concept, a development meeting with the applicant, we raised, you know, we raised their options, and one was to read, to develop the front half on neighborhood node and the back half of the RT. They decided that they wanted to go down the road of doing the rezoning, and I will say that in terms of master plan, that back half, this RT, is master planned for neighborhood nodes. So the, the zoning is consistent with what they're trying to do. It's where you get the details of the site plan and application to the adjacent properties, where you, where you start having these questions. But the applicant was given a choice, and they decided to go down the road of the rezoning.
Just a follow-up?
Yes.
So, but I don't see a transition then. You know, usually you have to have a transition between something that's, doesn't comply or is not what was, to what, what's being proposed. In other words, we've got residential at a maximum of 30-foot, and we've got, we're just butting it right up to that property line of neighborhood node with a height of 35. So I'm just, I'm, I'm looking for, following the ordinance is what I'm looking for, a transition.
I guess a follow-up question to that. Is the neighborhood, is the master plan boundary for a neighborhood node exactly at the applicant's property line between the duplexes to the east? Or are there, does it extend a little bit further to the west? Can, can we look at that for a minute, just, just for clarification? Where, where exactly is the, the master plan boundary in that neighborhood node? I don't think we've looked at an aerial of that at all, to, just to get a-
It's not, yeah, I don't know if we have a picture of it.
The actual master, the future, you're talking about the future land use plan?
I can tell you, the future land use plan for the neighborhood node is essentially a circle around the, the intersection. If strictly interpreted, that circle actually extends past this property into those properties that are also zoned, zoned RT to both the south and to the east. So it encompasses this, this property. But we don't look at the master plan on a, necessarily a parcel-by-parcel basis in regards to the future land use.
Can we look at the aerial of just existing master plan right now, as it exists today, without the rezoning, just to see the exact boundary of that corner?
So you want the ma, the master plan-
The future land use plan for the master-
Future land use plan.
Future land use plan, yes. Just to get a feel of that entire corner with how it extends to the west and actually to the south with the office buildings that are existing there.
We're almost there.
Sure.
Uh, there's a better one.
Mr. Chairman, the-
Where, where is Haldain?
Haldain?
Yes.
Niles? The property line is approximately somewhere in- The property line is approximately somewhere in this location, so it does extend into the RTs to both the south and to the west of the proposed property.
Clearly within the node.
Well, I, I just cautioned the planning commission, I, we call these, I call this a blob, a blob map. It's a, it's conceptual nature and it's, all the, all the nodes for the master plan were the same size. It's, it's representing conceptually the notion of, of these nodes with, that are more dense and more intense and have mixed use, et cetera, are at the intersections. So we took, we took these concept, these conceptual, these concepts, when we updated the ordinance, we went actually property line by property line because zoning has to be accurate. A policy does not have to be as accurate as a zoning map because a zoning map is a law and a master plan is a policy.
If I may, it seems that we had a discussion several years ago on the area of these nodes and I think the consensus of the commission and the planning department was they can contract and expand depending on what is proposed for that parcel in a node. So that blue circle is really meaningless as it relates to if we look at a blue circle and say, oh, all those properties within that, no, why do we rezone? It doesn't work that way. It's a concept as Brent said.
We, we took that concept, there are 21 nodes and after we adopted the master plan in 2008, Mr. Hudson's correct, we went node by node and we literally mapped out the specific boundaries of each node. Some, some are as large as the circle, some are larger, some are smaller, but went case by case based on the characteristics of the node and based on the intent of each of the 21 nodes as described in the master plan.
Thank you. One of the, one of the, yes, Mr. Edmonds.
Just a follow-up. How far down does the existing Kroger and CVS site go along, along right there?
Long Lake?
Isn't this square?
It's Long Lake and.
Square Lake, Libernoy.
Square Lake and Libernoy. It's supposed to be Square Lake and Truks.
I, I think on the, yes, Ms. Cooper.
I think you brought up the Caswell.
I did. Juggling a lot of PDFs here.
Yeah.
So Caswell is a, is a, is a PUD, so it's, it's not, was not a conditional rezoning. Actually, at the time, I don't believe conditional rezonings were even legal in Michigan, but I digress. So the P, this is a mixed-use PUD, it's not a vertical mixed-use, it's horizontal mixed-use. It's got Petrazzillas on the corner, it's got, it's got retail along the front and there were 14 single-family detached units over here. And then these are 74 units here. And what's interesting, so I don't know the density because I don't know the, the area of, of that, but you can see the fact that, that there are 74 units and they're an attached product. What's interesting is the relationship here between the rear of the buildings and single-family residential to the east. Pretty, pretty close.
How much more is it?
Well, the, there's no dimensions here, but I, I'm assuming this is a 24-foot, 24-foot wide plus another, so it's about, you know, 30 plus or minus, 30 feet, 35 feet? Without having any dimensions in front of me. I haven't looked at this in a while.
I wonder how long those buildings are.
You know, maybe, maybe another example is Bradley Square. Bradley Square is a, now it's RT, so they would have met the height requirements of, of the RT district, but that, that, that's a project that's on Rochester Road, a very busy road and it butts up to, to single-family residential. And if you recall, I believe the front, the fronts of the buildings face the residential just much like these.
I've, I've looked at this, these units, I've driven through there and they're slightly different and I think that they're, they're marketing them as stacked ranches. So they're, and I think they are definitely, they're three-story.
So you're, you're correct. So in 2006, when this is approved, these were vertical. These were like the, what we're considering. The market, as the recession happened, this sat empty for a long time and they came back and they, they basically changed the unit type from vertical units to stacked ranches. You're correct, they're now stacked ranches. Same number of units, same setback, same heights, everything's the same, just the, the unit type's different.
Okay, thank you for that detail there. I just want to bring it back to a topic that's relevant to this project. It's, and it's been relevant to projects in the past and I think it's not going away and that's the issue of transitions. The transition between an existing node or exist, one type of zoning to another type of zoning. And that's what we have tonight and I just want to follow up to what Mr. Crent said. What we have, what's existing to, today on, on that property is neighborhood node and it goes to RT and then the other properties, I believe, are RT as well, the duplexes, is that correct?
That's correct.
So current zoning, the way it's existing today, there is no transition. There is an actual very well-defined boundary, a, a, an actual line, a real property line, a real zoning line between, between neighborhood node and an RT. So I guess the, the, my question and just something for thought would be, what we're being asked tonight to do is just move that line over from where it is today and add that neighborhood node, that area to neighborhood node. So today there's no transition, there's no in-between that neighborhood node and RT. What's being proposed, there is nothing in-between neighborhood node and RT. It's just neighborhood node and RT. There's nothing you can put in-between there to create any kind of transition. So that's what we're looking at today. That's, that's what I, I'm looking at that property and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm processing, I'm thinking out loud here. Yes, Mr. Edson?
Let me help your thinking then.
Yes.
If we want to do a transition, instead of having the two A and B slabs going up three stories with the density, why not reduce it to two stories and spread it out a little bit? So it's going to be different than the other buildings in the front, it'll be a completely different area, but it would provide a transition between RT and the neighborhood zone and this project.
Well, I guess height-wise.
Reduce the height, spread it out, maybe not have a slab or two slabs like that, but have some detached units in there.
So what you're proposing is the transition that would be more of, less density, not necessarily height, because height-wise is what's permitted right now west of this property is also RT.
Reduce the height and the density also in that one section. I think that would provide a transition between the residential and this project. You can have 55 feet on Libernoy Road, I could care less at that point because it's on a commercial strip, but we're back in the residential neighborhoods and even to the south. There's a little concern about this megalith which is going to be established in the zone, the neighborhood node. I can't tip a builder or developer to do that, but it's my suggestion that if you're looking for a transition, that may be one alternative.
Well, what I see before us, what the project that was presented before us is, is providing a project that is uniform, that uniformity of all units. That, that's what I see. And, and the developer didn't, could have easily presented something that was forced 40 feet, 45 feet in, in the neighborhood node and brought it down to 30 feet, but they chose not to.
I agree. I'm just saying, I don't necessarily agree with their choice.
Right.
They've got to come before us for approval and I'm voicing my opinion that I don't think I'm going to give it based upon this projected project as is.
If I'm stating the obvious, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here. So Mr. Hudson expresses opinion which he's, that's what he's here to do, is express his opinion. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear that the neighborhood node portion, which is approximately two-thirds of, of the property, what they're proposing meets all zoning ordinance requirements, does not need to be rezoned. It complies with everything. What they're proposing to do, now they could by right develop the, the rear part of the parcel as Mr. Carroll explained with a 30-foot maximum height, a few more units, et cetera. But they're, they're proposing to rezone the rear. So when we talk about transition and, and compatibility, et cetera, we're really not talking about the front because they can do this by right today. We're really talking about the transition, the relationship between the project and the abutting properties, in particular the, the residential to the south and, and to the west as well as the, the dentist office to the north. So I just want to be, I just want to be very clear that when we talk about transition, we talk about compatibility, we're really talking about this and not the entirety of the project. Now I, we're, as I indicated, we're really busy and, and we're, I'm working on a lot of projects and I get sometimes confused whether we talked about this at the planning commission or we talked about it with, internally with, with the applicant. I kind of, I, but I, we did, I know that we, we talked about this conceptually and we discussed the difference at the, at the concept meeting we had, the informal meeting of planning commission. We did discuss, you know, should he rezone, should he do RT? We kind of kicked it around and I think the concept that was shown at the time was generally well-received by the planning commission. Again, we didn't have elevations at the time and it was a little kind of loose. But, but I just want to make sure we focus our attention for the rezoning really on the, on the back of the property, not the entirety.
Yes, Mr. Teague.
Is this a conditional rezoning?
Yes.
Yes.
So if it's a conditional rezoning, we can put conditions on the rezoning even if it's a neighborhood node rezoning?
We cannot, we cannot put conditions on anything they can offer. I need to make that clear. They need to voluntarily offer any conditions. We cannot coerce them until making conditions. After our last couple of conditional rezonings, Lori wanted me to make sure we're all on the same page on that.
However, we can ask developer to offer.
He can, he, he needs to verbally, he needs to tell us he doesn't feel coerced and that he, they need to be, they need to come from him.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
Again, getting back to this, the back property which is, they're up for rezoning. If the property, like I said earlier, if it wasn't rezoned, they could build their units and they can slightly lower it, slightly bring it back and it'll be just fine. Here's, you brought up earlier, well, if they, if there is that hard line right now between neighborhood node, which, which is zoned that way and the, the stack of empty land that is RT, there would just be a hard line. They could have 55-foot high. Here's the, the rub on that. The property owners on Niles bought their property knowing what's behind them is RT. They didn't buy that property thinking it's a neighborhood node, it's going to go 55 feet. They, that becomes the public, are we providing the public welfare? In other words, that we are reducing their value of life, their welfare by imposing something by rezoning. So that's why I'm asking for a transition, something to be compatible with RT, which was the expectations of the people who brought, bought those properties on Niles to what would change to a neighborhood node and those, those homes on that strip that's going to be, proposed to be rezoned, that would comply with RT and still become part of the development. So that's my feeling. I want to protect the, the welfare of the people that spent their more hard-earned money on those homes on Niles and not expecting it to be rezoned and then basically a solid wall. I agree with Mr. Teague and Mr. Hudson, that's a massive fall. That's, that's something they didn't intend on, or expect it happening to their property, the back view of their property when they bought those properties. And we are imposing on them a new condition and that's what I don't want to see happen to those property owners.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
Let me take the devil's advocate, the opposite point of view. When anybody buys a house, they spend, you don't buy a house based on future expectations. Things change. If you, if you want to control what that property is going to be, you should buy it yourself. I, I'm not a big proponent that this has to be transitioned and I do remember the initial time we talked about it. There was a consensus among planning commissioners that it all should look alike, that it all should look alike. I don't think we're going down that path right now.
Another aspect of the transition, I think, is maybe loosely interpreted, it would be transition of density and transition of height. So if we just look at those two aspects right there, it's not before us tonight, but a hypothetical transition of density, a transition of height would be actually the neighborhood node being up to 50 feet, then you got what's being proposed for conditional rezoning tonight, that going down to 36 of what's being proposed and then the existing homes there going down to 30. That's an actual geometric transition if you want to look at it from perspective of a roofline. Because if we're dropping down from neighborhood node at a maximum of 50 permitted down to 30 and down to 30, in terms of roofline height, well, geometrically, that's really not a transition. So the, the question really is what are we, what are we looking for? Are we looking for an actual physical building transition or can, can the rooflines be, what's being proposed here actually in the neighborhood node be lower in a higher, in a rezoning request by six feet and still be considered a transition by only six feet higher than the RT to the, to the west? So that, that's just my thought there in terms of the, the two aspects of transitioning density and transitioning roofline.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
That is an illusionary, comparing apples and oranges. You're saying they could have gone 55 feet, but they're only coming down another 14 feet, so there's a transition. It's not a real transition. The fact is that we've got this massive project here and the heights and density as proposed. So, you know, I understand your thinking on that, but I don't think that we can apply it to the situation.
Any other thoughts? Ms. Cooper.
If it wasn't rezoned, that back side of the property, they could put eight units. Am I correct?
Rough math, it's about an acre and based on 5,000 square feet per unit, it's about 8.5, round down as eight, so approximately eight units in the back.
So if you go to the site plan, if we took out four units, the density would be less, the landmass wouldn't be as intimidating for the length of that, what, 125 and 150?
I, I don't know, there.
Not an architect.
There are, there are, based on the site plan, there's 11 units. I don't know why I came up with a 12th unit, so it's, I think they're going to need three extra units. But they could do eight units under the RT if it was just, if it were made, basically eight units were made as RT.
Eight attached units, correct?
Could be eight, could be eight units, yes, attached.
Are we, any other thoughts on this in terms of the request or the intent here to rezonate? What was that, I'm sorry?
I said we've pretty much beaten it up.
Well, we talked about transition, we have an actual application before us this evening. We heard in the report that we, we discussed as a talking point, the transition between, between this development and, and the RT neighborhood to the west. We heard the architect state that they were able and willing to basically kind of cut and paste and shift those, basically shift the development over five feet to provide five more feet to get it to 35. There does appear to be room for additional, additional landscaping in that area. They are proposing some new trees. So, I mean, one of the, one of the questions then is, is it, we take this application at its face and we, we consider it, is that appropriate transition for a 36-foot tall building? If they shift the existing, it's 30, if they move it back five more feet, it's 35. With the landscaping, what's there, is that, is that appropriate? If not, why not?
I guess let me just kind of throw this thought out to the commissioners. Would any of you feel more comfortable with reducing the number of units on that side but allowing the developer to keep the same uniformity of all the units there? So bring it down to eight, bring it down to eight units on that side, but give the developer the 36 feet, 34 feet and 36 feet that they're requesting? Any thoughts on that?
Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
I don't have the strong concern that many of my commissioners have. I, I think this developer has done a lot already and I don't, when I say that, I don't mean that I, I think we'd be wise to get the developer and the architect. and the architect back up and see if we can negotiate something.
I agree.
I know Mr. Fain will object to that, but I.
Yeah. We're not negotiating anything. We're not negotiating anything.
I think it's called dialogue. We're not, we're not gonna negotiate.
And if the applicant wants to voluntarily offer some conditions based on the conversation that we've had, that is his prerogative, but it has to be his prerogative and his voluntary conditions that he is offering.
It's a discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Cooper.
When we were all had a discussion on the table, I saw one of the representatives raise his hand. I don't know if he remembers, but I would appreciate if he remembers what he was going to offer as comment.
Maybe we need to take a break, let them discuss.
Okay. Can we take a five-minute break and then can we call up the applicant again and discuss some of the issues that were brought up after five minutes? Thank you.
If we can get the applicant, if they would like to come forward, please, and present anything new that they would like to, that they haven't yet tonight.
Members of the commission, thank you for all of the discussion. I know it's been a lot of information to take in and a lot of things that need to be done. We talked about that transition and how important it is. What we'd like to do is... What we're suggesting is our offer along this western property line is currently we have six and five or 11 units. So the discussion has been setback and the discussion has been building mass. What we'd like to do is take two units out of this area, create a three-unit building, a gap, a three-unit building, and a gap. So we have three small building masses along this property line. Then we'd like to take and make that 35 feet, take the two and a half feet out of here and the two and a half feet out of here. So we've increased the setback, we decreased the mass of the building. We think that scale of that mass, those buildings, when you look at these three units right here in relationship to the overall width, it almost looks to me like from here to here is longer than this. So I think that that would be a good transition and that's what our offer is.
Thank you. Any discussion?
A question.
Yes, Mr. Hudson.
Sir, could you tell us the gap with these proposed three buildings between them? Would the be in measurement in feet?
Well, if you take, the units themselves are 21 feet plus, so your 42 feet plus that dimension between, whatever that math is, that's going to be your gap. You're picking up, you're going to be exceeding 21 feet, probably 30 some feet between.
No, my question is, measure between the buildings, what's the gap going to be?
That's what I...
So if you've got three buildings, you've got two there with it looks like a gap for some landscaping or something. If we're going to divide that into three, what is the width, that gap going to be between the three buildings?
That's what I was just saying.
The applicant is removing two units, that would be 40 feet plus what's existing there, divided up into two. So that would be approximately 25 feet each gap, if I got somewhere on there. So two units that are being taken out, that they're proposing, plus the existing gap, that's there.
Will the architect agree?
Maybe.
Pretty good, Al. I'm just wondering if he agrees that that may be the distance.
He's checking it.
It's going to be a little over 17 feet between each building. It's 42, 21, it's 43, 21, 6, 21, 6, plus the 10 that's there. Wait a minute. Hang on.
You divide it by...
I divide, hang on a sec. Add them all up, divide by three. Yeah, hang on a sec.
By two?
Take two units out.
No, there's, no, there's, it's, it's, hang on one second. Yeah, it's 26 feet, I believe. Right?
That sounds right. That's what the policy said. No idea.
Yes, I put one too many gaps in. It's 26 feet between the three. Because there's going to be two, there'll be two gaps between three, three-unit buildings. There's 21 feet for each unit that's coming out, 21, 21 is 42, plus the 10 that's there now.
So tell me again, between, you've got three buildings, what's the gap going to be between the two each? 26 feet, 17 feet?
I just, let me explain it again. Right, starting from the top, you're going to have three units. You're going to have a gap of 26 feet. You're going to have three units. You're going to have a gap of 26 feet, you're going to have three units.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant on what they're proposing?
Just to make sure that the staff is, won't have any problem with that.
No, I was just looking comparatively, the, just for conversation's sake, the RT district to the east where the duplexes are, the total setback for a duplex is 15 feet, so five on one side, 10 on the other side. So if you mimic that on the other side, you could have 15 feet between. So this is actually, this gap would actually exceed, so it certainly would be comparable to the gap in the RT district to the, to the east. And it would actually exceed it. So...
It definitely includes more grain space.
Mr. Krenn.
This seems a good solution to me personally. I realize we would like the lowering it of five extra feet, but I would also like to ask staff, the original agenda item basically says we should postpone this and have these other 12 items addressed. Is there anything on that list of 12 that you feel has not been addressed still? That's on Ben's report.
Well, I, I think there are what I would deem as more minor or insignificant things that can be dealt administratively, such as the issue of the lighting, the width of the sidewalk, the required landscaping, bicycle parking, et cetera. I still think there are two issues that I don't know if I've got clarification on and if the planning commission's got clarification on, and that is the relationship of that northern driveway to the property line. I've heard Mr. Butler issue a couple of different distances and they can work, they think they can work that out, but I don't know if there's any definitive distance that's been stated. And the second one is the traffic study still is outstanding, that, I don't know if the planning commission felt that was a sufficient answer that was given, but do you feel comfortable with the traffic study? Because the engineer, again, has not verified that traffic study. So in my opinion, other than the minor stuff, those are the two issues that still need to be discussed.
Let's, can we discuss those with the people that are right now?
So it's up to the purview of the chairman and the planning commission.
Can we, Mr. Butler, if you can please come forward just to clarify the issue. I believe we discussed that, that what you're proposing is to not make any changes. Can you please confirm that if you're not proposing anything, any changes to that northern width of that road?
The distance that's on, is proposed and we've not changed it, is a foot. It's one foot. The wall is essentially on the property line. It's a tenth of a foot north. So there's one foot, one inch between our property and the wall. It's one foot from our, I'm excuse you, our back of curb to the wall is 1.1. The back of curb to the property line is one foot.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes, if you stay there just a moment.
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with, I think the majority of my planning commissioners here that one foot is not enough. Is there a possibility, and maybe this includes the architect again, let's, would you be willing to offer a narrowing of perhaps that center green going between those two buildings in the center there by three feet so you could provide at least three feet up against And I do, I do applaud the developer for providing additional parking on street. That's, even though you have four spaces per unit, that's, when you're having, there's a neighborhood party or something like that, you do need some additional parking.
I realize they're going to be discussing for a minute, I'll just fill in just a couple of quick thoughts. We're originally talking of that park, that street on the north side, if they can't open the door, they're going to hit the wall, they're going to park away from that curb anyway. So if they're going to park away from that curb anyway, and why not just put grass there so they can open their door and step on the grass as opposed to stepping on something between a curb and the street and, you know? I just feel like there should be at least two and a half, maybe three feet, which would take away maybe two feet from that center green area. I'm just throwing that out for thoughts. It just makes sense. I'd just like to be able to open my car door and have my passenger safely get out without me having to go through, jump through hoops to do that.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you on that. Just, just looking at the site, if you're one foot away from a property line and the adjacent property owner, there's absolutely no maintenance there, let's say there's no grass, there's no, it's just, just mud or whatever there's there, unmaintained property, the residents there or the guests have one foot to exit the vehicle and step on one foot of whatever there's there. So just from a practical point, it would make sense to have at least three feet there. I, I mean, just from a, from a design perspective.
We'll offer two feet and we'll take the two feet out between those two buildings.
Offer two additional feet? So make it three total?
Yeah, correct. So it's three total, right. And we'll take that dimension out.
That seems reasonable. Thank you for offering that.
Okay. So we have the...
Traffic's left.
We just, I guess summarize what we have. We have a total of three foot offset to north property line. We have the, the units on the west side, the setback increased from 30 to 35, and the number of units decreased from 11 to nine units with two openings in between the three units of 26 feet. Those are the two major changes and the reduction in the green belt on the interior space by two and a half feet, on one side, two and a half feet on the, on the west side. Any other changes that were significant?
Yes, can we talk about the traffic?
Yes.
That was the other issue that was not...
Traffic.
Not cited.
So I want to clarify a couple of things. So you're aware Livernoy is not a city street. It is owned by the road commission. So any improvements that we would do on Livernoy would be required by the road commission, and they have reviewed our study and they have not requested any improvements, nor have they requested any turning restrictions on Livernoy for a whole lane. So, just so you're aware, they have seen the study and they have no comments other than if the signal is to be upgraded, that's something that the city can consider. That was their only comment on the study. In regards to revising the study for the traffic counts, if we do new traffic counts, it would really only impact the traffic between the hours of about 2:00 and 4:00 when school would be in session. However, our traffic study evaluated between 4:00 and 6:00 in the PM. So we could collect new counts, but they're not going to change the results of the study in regards to anything that you saw in here. We're still going to recommend that the signal timing is upgraded, still going to recommend that they should probably upgrade the signal at some point to improve the operations on Livernoy at Square Lake. So as far as what we need to do to address the traffic, I don't know that any of these items will change the outcome of what you see here.
What I heard you say is you feel confident that the data you have from the road commission is sufficient enough to say that if you would redo the study, you would get similar results and it wouldn't change your recommendations at all at this point?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Tagel.
My point for this part of the discussion wasn't whether or not the study would change or if they did more study, it would change. My point was the lack of response to the request or the response from the city engineer. I think it's important that as a petitioner, you respond to a request from the city or respond somehow to comments you get from an organization that you're asking for approval from.
In this case, we actually did not receive a letter, an official comments letter. Normally, OHM would provide an official letter with comments similar to what Carla Wardman did here. However, they were provided in the body of an email, in a chain of emails for us to respond to. So wouldn't, wasn't actually like we received an official comments letter. It was more of just for your information, this is what we think, as opposed to what we would normally receive as an official comments letter than we would provide an official response. So it was a bit unclear as to what we should be responding to.
I wasn't aware of that, and I'm not sure, I mean, I don't want to hold this petitioner up because the engineering department didn't feel it important enough to respond in writing to them officially. I mean, I don't know what to say about this. I don't know if there's policies that departments follow or don't follow.
It's, it's pretty standard that the response from the engineering department is an email in response to, to traffic items. They don't normally put together a formal letter reviewing the traffic study. I, I can't...
Let me ask you this question. Did the email request a response or did the email with whatever content was in it, did it require a response from the petitioner? Now, I, I have no idea.
I do have the email in front of me if you'd like to read it. There was no request for a response. It was just to Bill Hootery from OHM, and it said, "I concur with the signal changes, adding the diesel taper." This is the comments from the road commission, because it was in an email chain. And it said, "In addition to the road commission's comments about upgrading the signal," and there was the bullet points as noted here. That was the extent of the comments.
I'm responding to an email that was sent, that was sent from engineering that, that we were CC'd on. It did say that they did question the timing of the study as well as one other point, and the applicant was sent the email. I did not know if they were asked specifically to respond to it or not, I'm just, they were, they were aware of the concern in the traffic site. That's pretty much where I'm at this point.
Mr. Edmonds.
I think since this is the last perhaps sticking point, I, I would say that it would be important that the traffic expert for this developer provide a written response.
Absolutely.
And are you willing to do that?
Oh, absolutely. I will descend it to, it's engineering tomorrow in response to these comments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other concerns, questions, comments regarding any other issues, or can we just move with the resolution on this? Are we ready for a resolution?
I think we're probably ready for a resolution, but I, I'm not really the, are we going to put all these changes in that he has offered?
Absolutely.
I think that's really critical. Do we need a few minutes to put all that stuff together in a proposed resolution from the staff?
What was...
You heard what I said. Accurately.
Is there someone on the planning commission who's confident that they can make an accurate, propose an accurate resolution?
Mr. Collet.
I'm, you know, I'm willing to start the resolution. But I don't have all of those things listed that we talked about, and I think perhaps the chairman has a better handle on it than anyone.
Since you've already stated them, Molly, you can, you can rattle off the resolution.
Sure.
And if you can get it to the form that, you know, that...
Yeah, we'll coach you if you forget something, we'll help remind you.
Mrs. Zarniky will be able to...
So just, are we going for a recommendation to, to move it forward?
Recommend?
Yeah.
I am, I don't know about the rest.
Well, that, that would be a good starting point. You got to, as opposed, we've got two choices, postpone or recommend, so.
And I agree with the planning chairman, I don't think it's fair to hold this developer up any longer.
Resolution PC 2017-05, resolve that the planning commission hereby recommends to the city council that the RT to N&amp;Q conditional rezoning request, which incorporates preliminary site plan approval as per section 16.04 of the City of Troy zoning ordinance located on the west side of the, of Livernoy, south of Square Lake, with section nine being approximately 2.6 acres in size, be approved to provide applicant, be approved with the following conditions offered by the applicant for approval.
I think we may want to refer to those as design considerations?
Sure. Design considerations offered by the, by the applicant. One, provide a three-foot setback of the proposed road on the north side from the north property line. Two, increase the west side setback from 30 feet to 35 feet. Three, reduce the number of units on the west side from 11 to nine units in clusters of three with, with distances of 26 feet, approximately 26 feet between the three cluster of units. What was other, one issue?
Were you reducing the green space in the middle?
Reducing the green space of the center, what can we call that, the center island?
Buildings, yeah.
Yeah, to accommodate...
To accommodate the increase of five-foot setback on the west side of the property. Did that include everything?
I think so.
And also response by the, written response from the...
Oh, yeah.
And the written response by the traffic consultant to the city engineering department.
Did this say anything?
I don't think so. I think we've got it all.
Can I get a second?
All support.
Mr. Edmonds, second from Mr. Edmonds. Road comm, Ms. Zarniky.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Abahedian?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Resolution passes, motion passes. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, if I could remind the applicant to have your attorney, work with our attorney on the conditional rezoning agreement as soon as possible. We can, we can send you model language to play off of.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Don't worry about that.
Item number nine on the agenda, preliminary site plan review, file number SPJPLN2017-0010, proposed Shake Shack northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, 850 West Big Beaver. Section 21, currently zoned BB, Big Beaver District. Mr. Carlisle.
Very briefly, the planning commission, this was last addressed at the May 9th meeting. At that time, there were three conditions that the applicant, that this was, I was postponed for. The first was the applicant was to bring material samples to the meeting. The second was the applicant was to show the Shake Shack building in relationship to other buildings on site to ensure architectural compatibility. And lastly, was to provide a photometric plan. We do note that all those items have been addressed by the applicant, and they're here tonight to present the renderings and the material samples.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle before we get to applicant? No questions. I see the applicant is here. Can you step forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you have some renderings in front of you that you guys asked for. There was, oh, Max Williams. I'll just go through your items, one, two, and three, that we were provided. So number one was provide material samples at the planning commission meeting. So we have three samples. The first sample is EFIS with a specific paint color on it. I can pass that around. Two other samples is ATAS metal paneling, two different profiles alongside the building. Also, there'll be changing direction and diagonals throughout. If you guys grab this stuff, it's kind of sharp, so please be careful. I don't know if you want to go through the other elevations, colored elevations?
Sure. What can I do? I can put whatever drawing you want, Jason.
My name is Jason Krieger with Krieger Glade Architects, 1412 East 11 Mile. We actually are representing the developer. We've been before you for a couple of other projects, and we're just part of the team. So we're here to help out and answer questions. So as Max mentioned, we have materials here. Brent, maybe go to the view that's on 16 Mile. There you go. So my understanding is that the initial proposal, they didn't have the materials with them, we have them here today, and we just want to show you where on the elevation these materials are. So for starters, where it says Shake Shack on the, I don't have a pointer, but where it says Shake Shack, those are the big letters on the upper portion there. That's a deeper rib metal panel that's shown right here. It's installed horizontally. To the left of that, where the angle is, that's a shallower rib metal panel, which is right here. This is the color. They're both black. It's the look that they, that they have. The lighter gray section, that's the EFIS, which we handed out the sample of, and that'll be painted cityscape, which is almost like a super dark charcoal color. So the rest of the material is glass storefront, right? And then I believe that there's wood slats on the left, which if you rotate the building back around, Brent, from the west, there you go. Those are wood slats.
Yep.
Okay. So those are the materials. It's a very simple material palette. The signage is probably aluminum, the letters.
Actually, I'm not sure what the letters in between the steel are made of. I'm assuming they're aluminum.
Okay. And then with regards to the lights, the lighting on this building, there's, there are hardly any lights. There are string lights on the canopies. There are some service lights around the building, around the dumpsters. The rest of the lighting around the site are the decorative lights that are part of the overall development. We do have a photometric plan that illustrates a bit more for like general pedestrian use. It's not glaring in any way, but we do have that for your information. Does anybody want to see these samples? The other items that were outstanding were architectural compatibility. I mean, it's a very unique, modern building. Personally, I think it looks really great. It's going to be a great addition to Big Beaver, Detroit. It's exactly what the developer wants for the site. They want edgy, contemporary buildings. And Shake Shack's a great name. I mean, it's just exciting to have them come to town. So the use fits in very well with this as well. So I mean, we hope that we're answering the questions and we're available for more questions.
There's also a letter submitted by the architect to further explain the compatibility.
Yes, Mr. Edmonds.
The one, one thing that was brought up by Karen Cruz, who's not here today, was she wanted clarification on the banner of lettering that goes around. I'd like you to basically give, I was hoping that you would have some photographs of the existing ones. I thought that was part of our discussion. I didn't see that. Do you have any photographs that you can show us of the exist, other, other places?
I just built one in Detroit. I can take a quick scroll. I mean, you can read from the rendering. There are 10-inch tall band of letters, smoky silver metallic matte finish. There's a band of LED lights that sit inside that steel I-beam. They're set in between, they're kind of more of a shadowed effect. They kind of glow at night. I can look through my phone really quickly to see if I can find a picture.
It's okay, I don't need the phone. But my, my question is this, I think the concern was that it's not facelit, because the word Shake Shack on the larger, the larger side is facelit. This is backlighting. You've got a gray lettering against a, is it black background? What is the background? What's that, that channel, color?
The white flanger runs across the channel, I should say. Yeah, that would be, I guess, black, the super dark charcoal.
Yes, the channel's painted the same color as the EFIS, the SW 7067.
Okay. So in that case, you've got a light bouncing off of that, so you're illuminating really that, that gray charcoal surface, and the lettering is not illuminated in any way other than, you know, the walls, the back behind it's illuminated, but not the letter itself. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that's the way I see it. I don't see a problem with that because it is, to me, very muted. You're not, you're not glaring. You've got a gray against gray, you know, true shades of gray, and you're, every, I'm sure everyone can probably visualize this, hopefully they can. If you illuminate something that's a dark charcoal, it's not going to be bright. You don't have a lot of reflection off of a charcoal surface. You would have off of a white surface, but not off a charcoal.
Correct. I think the intent, and again, we're not the architects specifically, but I can see the intent is for it to be a subtle, subtle effect.
Thank you.
Mr. Edmonds.
Following up on that, the, the last representative that was here at the last meeting said the height of those letters on the projection menu was four inches. I think, I think you want to correct that, don't you? Because you did get a variance based on... Because you did get a variance based on ten inches. That was what it was. You know, we spent, those are ten-inch-high letters.
Their, their callout is ten and they're clearly depicted as ten. Obvious for both of us, yes.
And I did have a chance to drive by the one in Detroit. They don't look like they're ten inches tall.
I know that they are ten inches tall.
Okay. Good.
I, I did build it.
Yes.
Just a reminder, the planning commission, that I did provide an electronic copy of the signed application for the billing code board of appeals to all the planning commissioners. And there was a lot of really good information in there, including some color renderings and et cetera, so.
Any, yes, Mr. Edmonds.
I do have another one, too. The, those charcoal gray panels on this view right here, that's all EFIS?
It's EFIS and then the black lines that represent in between there is metal, ATAS metal that will be this color that breaks those panels to give it the shapes that you see in the color rendering.
Let me ask you why in the materials that you sent to the building court of appeals, there was nowhere near this much EFIS on those, which, you know, I, I'm just speaking for myself. I'm not a big fan of EFIS. I, I prefer much more natural materials. I would prefer the metal, you know, the metal panel painted that shade of gray, if that's, if that's, if that's possible.
Sure. I can answer that question honestly. They went through a round of VE items and one of the VE items was to remove some metal paneling because of.
Is the VE acronym?
I'm sorry, the value engineering.
Yeah. So the metal, ATAS paneling is extremely expensive, so they tried to take, yeah, they tried to take some paneling down to help on cost of the project. But Shake Shack is willing to revert back to the original with more ATAS paneling if the planning commission sees that that needs to be done.
And to that point, first, I do like the idea of introducing a different material, which is the model. And I think if it's done in a tasteful way where it's an accent versus a majority, I think it would be done very well.
My only problem is the discrepancy between the two, you know, the application where you sent it before and now you're presenting this one, which is much more EFIS.
Correct, yeah. Rightfully so. So.
I think.
The intent is to move this forward so as Max said, you know, we would make the offering.
Very good. I'd like to ask, does that satisfy your condition, your problem, too?
Yeah, I, I think you're not making a resubmission tonight, is that correct? You're not amending your original submission?
For the panels?
Right.
No, correct.
Okay, this is just a ren, let's call it an artist rendition of, however, the original submittal indicates more metal on there and that's what we're looking for.
Correct.
So that, as I understand in talking to staff, that, that these documents supersede that document. And so this is, personally, this is what I would be looking for as far as an end product with materials. Okay. One question that I have, and it's not clear on these elevations, and I really couldn't read it on the, on the renderings. What is in front of the trash receptacles in the, in that corridor between the Fidelity Building and Shake Shack? There's an area of, it's represented as exposed masonry, but I suspect there's something in front of the exposed masonry. But I don't know what that material is screening right here.
So.
No, that's the east side of the building.
Yeah, that's a picture of the inside.
Right.
Of the trash enclosure. In front of it's going to be doors that has the ATAS metal paneling.
So there are metal doors that match.
So you'll see doors with this material on it.
Okay.
And then on the sides is EFIS.
Will it take, will it take the shape of, of the slope, kind of that slope top shape to it and?
Yes, it will.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds.
Following up on that question, are these doors self-closing? Are you folks familiar with, there are some spring locks, self-closing doors?
I would have to look at the specifics. I don't know if they're calling for self-closing hinges, but we certainly would be willing to add self-closing hinges and I think that it's, I'll just write the note down and make sure that it's done because I think it's going to be needed or Fidelity will.
And I say that because we have a problem with a lot of trash enclosures where the doors are left open. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? If not, are we ready for a resolution? Would like to read the resolution?
Oh, just before that, there was one other, I think, this whole thing about the lighting and what is it, what is the lighting term that, so it's downward, it's not upward?
Directed, shielded or directed downward?
Shielded. Is that still an issue?
The applicant has shown, it's, I don't know if it shows up in the render or not, they showed string lighting such as that to go around the patio. It doesn't meet ordinance required about fully shielded. However, the planning commission does have the right to approve decorative lighting if they, if they feel this is, this is warranted, but on its face, it does not meet the requirements of shielding.
Are those lights turned off after a certain hour of night, operating hours, or is this open all night?
Yes, they're, they're on a timer system. They're closed, they shut off when they're closed.
They're for objects.
If, if they, if they can prove that the wattage is low enough that they're not going to, they're not going to provide glare onto the budding property or negatively impact drivers, then, then we can.
Remind me, so when we had our electrical engineer do the photometric plan, purposely didn't include those. I did ask him about that and he said it doesn't produce enough light. It wouldn't even, to that point, yeah, it didn't.
Well, likely at this day and age to be LED anyway, so I'd be able.
Hard to say.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Krent.
Just a follow-up on the string lights. I notice in the, in the documentation was, there was a twenty-five watt or ten watt. Either of those, personally, for me, being, be back from the road maybe a hundred feet, wouldn't affect driving. They're just like holiday lights. So do you happen to know if it's going to be a twenty-five watt or clear, is it a clear bulb with a fil, exposed filament? That's what it looked like in that illustration. But do you happen to know the details of that luminaire, the actual bulb itself?
I have to look and see what he was using, but I believe it was used in twenty-five watt. Do you know?
Is that incandescent or LED? Do you know?
It was LED.
Okay.
Yeah. Have you had a chance to see those?
Wouldn't be.
Because a twenty-five watt LED is a lot brighter than a twenty-five watt incandescent.
Yes.
Really? LED.
Maggiano's, for, it's another, another restaurant right on Big Beaver uses incandescent, clear, clear with filaments. And they go out quite frequently, by the way, just, but, but my, my thought is, I just wanted to know what kind of a luminaire are you going to be using? That's, that's what I'm really trying to drive for.
Sure. Absolutely. And I couldn't answer exactly what that is. I don't know if that's something that we can maybe direct back to staff or something like that. But I think the intent is for it to be a, just to create ambiance in the building, so we're kind of here to that.
Okay. I'll take your word.
And I think this is something that could be a final site.
A final, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Max is a twenty-five.
Brent, can you make sure that it's not going to be?
Lost.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's the kind.
Not going to be obnoxious. Right.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're ready for a resolution. Would like to.
I'll read it.
Mr. Krent, thank you.
Okay. Preliminary site plan review, file number SPJPLN 2017-0010, proposed Shake Shack northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, five, I'm sorry, eight-five-zero West Big Beaver, section twenty-one, currently zoned BB, Big Beaver District. Resolution, resolve that the preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article eight of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed Shake Shack restaurant located on the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, eight-fifty West Big Beaver, section twenty-one with, within the Big Beaver District be granted. That's it? Oh, do you want me to comply with, so, so let the patio lights comply with the zoning ordinance provisions?
Thank you. Get a second.
Do you need to add anything on the trash enclosures or any of the other things that we discussed?
Yes. Thank you. Number two, that the, the trash enclosure, the trash enclosure, enclosure, got a word, it's better. Where the trash is stored, that they have self-closing doors, enclosures.
Is it?
Yeah, I know. It's just past my bid time.
Mine, too.
Can I get a second by Mr. Faison? Roll call, Ms. Arnicki, please.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
When do you plan to open?
What's that?
When do you plan to open?
Hopefully. Yep, September.
Great, I'm hungry for hamburger.
Whatever hungry thought.
Sorry.
Item number ten on the agenda, preliminary site plan review, file number SPJPLN 2017-0010, proposed Regency at Troy, skilled nursing facility, southwest corner of Maple and Axtell, two-seven-eight-five West Maple, section thirty-two, currently zoned IB, integrated industrial and business district. Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, thank you. This is another repeat project. This was last considered by the planning commission on April eleventh of this year. At that time, the applicant was postponed to address seven items from the planning commission. This includes reduction of the number of beds by five, adjustment to the rear parking setback to provide at least twenty feet, provide direct pedestrian connection from Maple Road, provide a bicycle rack, provide the required planties along Axtell Drive, provide a trash enclosure screen detail, and lastly, address any design considerations raised by the planning commission. The applicant has met all those requirements and they do comply with all ordinance requirements. In addition, they have revised the elevation. We find the elevation is a little bit more of a modern look and includes a mix of stone siding and a metal roof. The applicant asks, also has provided renderings for the planning commission consideration and so we are recommending approval based on the resubmittal.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
If I may, directing it to staff, November twenty-sixteen, we had a Sustainable Design Review Committee meeting and we approved the status and it was subject to three items. Can you tell me, have they been done? Let me read them to you.
Yes.
Applicants shall consider planning higher-profile plants in the bioswales and rain gardens to assist in the shielding headlight glare. Two, applicants shall submit enhanced maintenance plan for Engineering Department for review and approval prior to final site plan approval. And three, approval indicates, includes front yard parking between the building on both Maple and Axtell as proposed.
They have, they will be, they will meet all of them before, when it's constructed. So they have, they'll have to, they have not yet submitted final plans on the bioswale because they're waiting for this meeting for approval. But they will meet all three of these requirements, yes.
Okay. Any other questions before the applicant comes forward? No? Okay. I see the applicant here. Can you please come forward? Thank you for your patience. Thank you for waiting until this late hour.
Lots of pens, which one to use?
Roy Baker, NSA Architects, engineers, planners. Also have with me the team, Rebecca and David representing Sienna, and Steve representing PEA Civil Engineering. And we have, you know, renderings, which you have on your computers and the computer screen, and we have a color board that I can walk us through materials.
I can see it over there. We have a kind of a warm gray with slight beige tones, stone panel. It's, it's actually a real cut stone for the, probably about a third of the wall surface. And it undulates different stories from wainscote to one-story to one-and-a-half, two-story. Give it a nice aesthetic feel. We have three colors of siding, all hardy plank, no EFIS. Kind of a darker tone here, which is predominantly on the top floor as accent areas. This cream, one in the middles of the buildings. And we have a synthetic wood tone material as accents, and that's what you're seeing is the, you know, the, kind of the orange-red color throughout the building. The roof, as mentioned, is a standing seam, kind of a silver color in here. And we can, Steve, if you could, in the windows, tinted glass, aluminum mill finish frames. Steve, if you could kind of slowly walk the rendering through.
So briefly going through the, the renderings, this matches the rendering up on the screen. This is the front entry area featuring the port cochere and the main street area is facing north. We have a four-thousand-square-foot main street. It's a large assembly area. There is a approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-nine beds, I believe, in an entire project with the reduction of the, the five. And so that's the central gathering area. There's also multipurpose rooms, continuing education rooms, salon, cafe, and so on off of that central gathering area. It'll be for special events, musicals that come in, and different activities. The, the assisted living is on the left, skilled nursing's on the right. The architecture of this area, the intent is that it'll be nice light, nice landmark as you, as you drive by and it'll be interior lit and so, you know, there won't be any spillage, we'll say, out to the, the main drive. This is similar to the feel of the south entry. The parking is fairly split, fifty-fifty, fifty in the front, fifty in the rear. It's a little smaller scale, similar architecture, shading being on the south side. We have a second-floor dining up in this area and then the lower area, kind of a multipurpose room. This green area is a quite large, kind of central park area that we're talking, outdoor area. We also have an indoor, I should say, courtyards, let's say, in the interior of the space that are quite large and between the buildings, between the assisted living and the other building, there's other outdoor areas indicated on the site plans for the renderings. This is a kind of a close-up. You'll see the, the bioswale materials on the left, the main entry is just, just out of your vision on the left side and what you're looking at is the physical therapy, occupational therapy, which is really the, one of the very critical, important parts of this. A lot of the residents that are coming are here for one, two, three weeks, some longer. And this is an area, it's three thousand square feet, that occupational therapy, physical therapy. It's lots of daylighting in. It's a, a nice space to, we'll say, be in and do therapy and get better and then go off to, off to dining and so on. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Edmonds.
Thank you for listening. The folks did a really nice job. I was just going to ask, Brent, if you could, could we just see what they proposed the last time in terms of the 3D rendering of their building? I think this is such a contrast with the. Do you still have that?
I'd have to, you'd have to give me a second.
We'll give you a second. I just recall it was much more institutional looking.
Absolutely was.
This has a much more warm and welcoming look. I like it.
Me too.
It's almost 10 o'clock, so.
Is it in here? While we're waiting, I have a quick question for the architect, is there a swimming pool or a spa, or some kind of a therapy pool or involved, do you know?
No, there is not.
So if a patient needed that type of service, they'd have to be bused off board, or do you have a shuttle?
There's a Ciena facility right down Maple, at Drake, that has that service.
Thank you.
Hydrotherapy.
It's going to take a minute to find the renderings, but they, I've got the elevations here.
I seem to recall they were near the end.
Those elevations pretty much show it too, if you look at them, they're pretty ordinary.
Well, you know, I don't want to belabor this, but I think most of the commissioners who read that meeting would agree that this is a much more welcoming look. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, other than Mr. Edmonds' request for the previous rendering, for discussion purposes? Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
Who is the other gentleman that's here tonight that we didn't see the last time?
Dave Staub, General Counsel.
Could you introduce yourself?
Sure. Okay, Dave Staub, General Counsel, Ciena Healthcare.
And I'm assuming he's here because of the questions we had about their lawsuit, the 10-year-old lawsuit.
If you had questions about that, I could answer them.
I'd like to hear what the current thinking is, and have there been any other whistleblower or similar type lawsuits?
Actually, I'm a little concerned about your questions on a site approval plan for care for fitness of our building. As you probably know, or maybe don't know, skilled nursing is one of the most regulated industries in our country, and I think I should walk through the regulations that we are subject to, so you understand that these questions certainly are regulated by state and federal authorities quite extensively.
And I don't have a problem with that. I would agree, but I just want some kind of reassurance that you've not had any other lawsuits since that time, 10 years ago.
Lawsuits in general?
Lawsuits about patient care.
Work, we have 4,000 beds in the state of Michigan, I mean, this, and there are claims that come against nursing facilities and hospitals all the time, that is not unusual, so I can't answer that question in that way. I mean, I don't think, I also don't think it's an appropriate inquiry to ask me about my medical malpractice or my other lawsuits. What I can tell you about is, for example, in, all skilled nursing facilities are regulated by state and federal government, and are also rated as well. For example, CMS rates all facilities from one to five star, it's based upon four, three factors. One is your annual surveys, which you receive in a facility, which you have to receive at least once a year, or you receive complaint surveys that may occur in the interim period. Second, they're measured on quality indicators, which are a series of 30 or 40 data points that are taken for patient data, and that are taken into the federal government and analyzed. Third are staffing levels, what your nurse to patient staffing levels are. And the way that this works is that we have 10% of facilities in any given state receive a five-star, the highest rating. 20% receive a one-star, which is the lowest rating in any state. Michigan has 440 or so skilled nursing facilities, so we only have 40 or so five-star facilities. My company has 12 five-star facilities in the state of Michigan, or 25% of the five-stars. I have one one-star. So, quality indicators, which are what customers look at when they evaluate, I don't know if you've been, you know, if you've had to look at that, I had to do this two weeks ago for my own father, who went to nursing home for short-term rehab, but you go on nursinghome.gov and it pulls up all the nursing homes in your area, and it rates them, and that's a system that's been tweaked by the federal government, it has, it's, you know, a fairly good indicator of quality, and I think that speaks for itself when it comes to quality.
Thank you.
You mentioned 12 five-star facilities in Michigan. How many facilities do you have in Michigan?
We have 36 current, there are six new in construction. Yes.
So 12 five-star, one...
One star, that's correct.
Somewhere in the middle.
Right, that's right. I think our, I believe our average, I do have the average that we have, again, the middle is not average in Michigan, our current average overall star rating is 3.69, so we're quite a bit above the average.
Thank you. Mr. Savina, were you able to find it going?
No, I'll have to email to people, my brain stopped, my brain stopped.
I just want to commend the developer for including four charging stations for electric vehicles. I haven't seen that on any other, on other plans that we've had for these kind of developments, and I appreciate you putting it in.
Part of the SSD.
Can I have one more comment about this facility? It's a little unique. This facility is going to have 118 private rooms with private bathrooms and showers. I don't think there's any facility in the state that comes even close to this. This was built under certificate of need standards that were passed in 2012. This is actually one of the last CONs that had new beds before population shifted, which impacted bed need. So, we fought for the CON, we fought hard to bring this to Troy. We have a sister facility going to Independence Township that's being built on those same beds that were available. But to have 118 private rooms is just unheard of, so I just want to, you know, let you know that this is going to be quite an asset, not only at Troy, but to other surrounding communities who want to have that type of home-like environment. And I know with my father just having gone to a facility, that was the first thing we requested, he would have been at this facility, he's a Troy resident as well, although this wasn't here, of course, we had to go to Rochester Hills for that, for that type of service.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, before we move to a resolution, or are we ready for a resolution?
May I just say something before the attorney steps away? I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I just want to, I realize the questions that were posed to you were a little unusual, and I appreciate the applicant's willingness to allow you to come here and speak. I think this board recognizes after our last meeting, they can't approve or deny this based on whatever is out there in Google land regarding these allegations. The issue was, and I think you understand, the issue was brought to the table, and there was no one here last time to address it, so I appreciate that the applicant was, the willingness to allow you to come and address those issues today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edmonds.
And I'm sure Rebecca is very pleased that the council could be here. We really grilled her, unfortunately. Are you going to be operating this new facility too?
No, I can help you, so I must stay, we should see each other.
Well, we'll miss you.
Okay, I think we're ready for a resolution, would like to read that resolution.
Someone else.
Read it if you want. Mr. Faison.
Preliminary site plan review, file number SPJPLN 2017-001. Proposed Regency at Troy Skilled Nursing Facility, southwest corner of Maple and Axtel, 2785 West Maple, Section 32, currently zoned IB, integrated industrial and business district. Resolved that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed Regency at Troy Skilled Nursing Facility, southwest corner of Maple and Axtel, 2785 West Maple, Section 32, currently zoned IB, integrated industrial and business district be granted, and there were no subject to, so be granted. I'll second.
Second by Mr. Krent.
We didn't have any conditions.
No, no conditions, no. Vote, Ms. Arneke, please.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Item number 11 on the agenda, public comment, or items on the current agenda. Anyone in the audience have a comment on items on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 12 on the agenda, planning commission comments, start with Mr. Edmonds tonight.
No comment, thank you.
Mr. Krent?
Yep.
Ms. Cooper?
Just if anyone has a chance, please watch last night's city council meeting, two pertinent things, one, or some comments about something that came before our commission, I highly recommend that you watch it to see some of the people that we've had come to one of our public hearings, address the council about the lawsuit the city is now facing. That is one thing. The second thing is, last night, the city of Troy decided, the council decided to pass a resolution that they would be a, that we are a welcoming city. It's a program or initiative called Welcoming America, and they had a 25-page set of documents about what a welcoming city is, and they unanimously voted to be one of the 18, no, 19 communities in Michigan that are part of this initiative. And it has to do with just welcoming people who are different, and I think that I spoke in favor of the council. But the really important thing is to watch the comments from a couple of people from one of our prior public hearings. It was not pleasant, let's put it that way.
Mr. Tagle?
No comment, thank you.
Ms. Faison?
Nothing from there?
No comment.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Karla?
No comment.
I have no comment, we are adjourned.
Thank you.